All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the Vallejo City Council. The time is 7:11 PM. And I'll ask our city clerk. There it is. Nope, we're still working on it. We had a bit of an echo. All right, I'll ask our city clerk to please conduct the roll call.
Mayor Soares.
Present.
Vice Mayor Brigenzar.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Letter to Matthias.
Here.
Matulak.
Present.
Paul Maris.
Present.
All right, thank you. That's going to bring us to item three, Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand and join council for the pledge. All right, thank you all. We did just come out of a closed session, so I'll ask our chief assistant city attorney if we have a report out from closed session.
City council did meet this evening in closed session on two matters. The first matter is the workers' comp claim of Vincent Sprody versus City of Vallejo pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.95. Council unanimously voted to settle that claim with Mr. Sprody in the amount of $105,000 with a right to reopen. That's the report out for that item. Report out for the second item, Conference with Labor Negotiators. Council gave direction to staff and no further report out on that one.
All right, thank you. That's going to bring us, we have no presentations and commendations this evening, so that's going to bring us to our first community forum. I'll ask Manny to start our public comment clock, and we'll have a 15-minute community forum, so we'll be able to take about five speakers in person and then online. Anyone wishing to address the council on items not on this evening's agenda are welcome to speak at the first community forum, and if we run out of time, you'll have a second opportunity closer to the end of the meeting at our second community forum. Do we have any speakers in person at this time?
Yes, we have three currently.
All right, so we have three speakers in person. Anyone wishing to address us online will be able to take at least a couple online.
Okay, our first speaker is John Lewis.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm not sure what it's going to take to get a response on the, from the city on the, on holding Police Oversight and Accountability Commission meetings. And government not responding is the thing that really pisses people off. And I know this because I've been doing this for decades. I've gone to DC to meet with representatives and senators, and nothing is more frustrating than not getting a response. I was listening to Abdalina, I don't want to pronounce her last name, from Arizona, and talking about the frustration with Mike Johnson not swearing her in because it leaves her without computers and phones and access to government email system. And I feel her pain because if somebody wanted to contact the Police Oversight and Accountability Commission, how would they do it? I tried a couple of months ago to reach out to Tanya Liddedew, but the phone number on the city's website is Mina Diaz's number. So I sent an email about a month ago, and that didn't work. Today, I went ahead and left a message, and I hope Mina will pass it on. There's an appreciation dinner later this week for members of all the city commissions, and I really wonder if I, if I deserve a dinner because, but I think I might go anyway because maybe I can run into people that share my pain and frustration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
The next speaker is Anna Pietro.
Patero.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Anna Patero. I am in, on the Fairfield State Unionified School District Governing Board, but I'm here as an individual and as a teacher. I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Murray at the NAACP meeting last month, and I asked him about this wonderful project that Dr. Liddedew and Supervisor Cassandra James had spearheaded. It's called the 707 Project. And what you all did was fantastic. And what you asked, one of the parts of the project was cleaning up the community. Well, I'm here as a teacher. Many of my students, I don't live here in Vallejo, but my students do. So I'm here to follow up on our, on our discussion because I understand that there is an Adopt a Street program that you have here in Vallejo that I'd like to help restart. We have an Adopt a Street program in Fairfield, and so I got some statistics for you. We started that about seven years ago. But it's about $10,000. And what they do is you have volunteers of the community. The city decides how many public streets, public streets there are, and they provide all of these things for us. A bag and these, and we just call them up, the city after we picked up our trash, and they'll come and pick it up. Because understandably, the public works to spread so thin as well. So the members of the community would like to participate. We're just looking for things that we can help. And students need a place to, for community service for schools. I know that your office has a youth program, and so I was hoping that you would start this again. And I'm happy to adopt all of Broadway from Vallejo High School until you meet American Canyon. And I will do that every morning at eight o'clock from eight to nine o'clock. So if you start that, restart that program, I'll be happy to start, and I can start next Saturday. Thank you so much for your time. And thank you all for your service. To our, to our fellow firefighters and police officers, thank you so much for your service, and to your families for sharing you with us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Lorenzo Rudolph.
Good evening.
And you can raise, if you'd like to raise the podium, you can do it on your right. There's a little toggle.
Good evening. My name is Lorenzo Rudolph. I'm a 19-year-old student. I go to, she, she's my teacher. I go to Solano Community College, but I live here in Vallejo. And our streets are, they could be better. They're clean, but they could be better, especially on the streets that she was saying. And not only will I be there to clean up, I have groups that are also in my college, like A-2 Men and BSU and other students who need community college work or community service work and other things like that. And if you guys provide us with the tools, we'll wake up at that time every morning, clean the streets and even more streets if provided. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Rodney Leviass.
My name is Pastor Rodney Leviass. I am the pastor of Antioch Church of God in Christ. We're located on 21 Antioch Street.
Sir, if you make, if you would make sure you're speaking into the mic so that it gets picked up. It's just, it's picked up online. We can hear you fine here, but.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we had a homeless problem about a year ago that we were able to rectify, but we still have problems with homeless people. So the Lord laid it upon my heart. We have 2.4 acres of land that we want to start using for affordable housing. Also adjacent from us is 5.2 acres of land that is owned by Caltrans. We want to try to purchase that. I've been working with Natalie and Annette. What my goal is, is to try to get homeless agencies, foster care agencies, and agencies like the North Bay Regional, Regional Center to come together once a month so we can begin to rectify this homeless problem. We have the land and everything, and we think that, you know, working with these agencies, we can begin to end homelessness in Vallejo. You know, that's my goal, to end homelessness in Vallejo. You know, it has to be done. It's getting out of hand. You know, we had severe problems last year with the homeless. You know, there's no use in moving them on one area of the city and another or whatever. We have to begin to address the issue of providing housing for homeless. Because of the homeless problem that we had, I don't think it would be feasible at the area that we're at. My goal is to maybe work with foster care, foster kids being emancipated out of foster care and try to use that first. Hopefully, we can acquire other lands in the city, maybe around Sacramento Street, to try to accommodate homeless people with affordable housing. My goal also is to try to get them into some kind of workforce investment or job corps because they have to be retrained before they even consider getting into housing. So I want to work with social service agencies to get them in workforce training, job corps, train them, and maybe get them into job. We don't really want them getting into Section 8 or whatever, or, you know, basically having the same behavior that they had. On Pepper Drive, they had all kind of, all raggedy cars, and it was tents all over everywhere. We had a fire. So they have to be really retrained. We're having difficulty with Caltrans because that adjacent lot is 5.2. We can't really do anything because our land is too narrow for development. So we have to acquire that 5.2 acres of land that's owned by Caltrans.
Time. And I'm sorry to interrupt. That's, that's our time, but would you mind restating quickly your name and the church?
Okay, my name is Pastor Rodney Leviass. My church is located at 21 Antioch Street. If you want to go over there, it's right next to Pepper Drive and Lofus.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll make sure to follow up with you.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
All right.
Thanks.
So I would like to come maybe once a month. Hopefully, I can get some social service agencies working with me.
We appreciate it.
Deal with this homeless problem.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is Floyd Hall.
Greetings, council members. My name is Floyd Hall, and I am plagued with a very serious issue. Not just a serious issue for me personally, but it is a serious issue for Vallejo. It is a serious issue for the, for the citizens of Vallejo as well as communities abroad. I spoke to the mayor briefly about this, and maybe one other council member very, you know, very shyly about it, you know, you and I had a brief conversation. But there is a, there is a, there's a huge epidemic that is happening here in the city of Vallejo. From what I know, it dates back, so I've been active, I've, I've lived here in the city of Vallejo for over almost 40 years. And as far as I can remember, even as a kid in church, I recall fragments of adult conversations about, you know, various entities that were in our church parking lot, you know, taking down license plates, coming into our building, you know, planting spyware and so forth. And this was back in the early 90s. So fast forward today, six years ago, I was at my parents' home. I was preparing lunch. I heard a, a small frequency voice. It was just out of the blue. I was just like, man, what is this coming from? So after some investigation, I found out that it was a low radio frequency. The low radio frequency voice first identified themselves as watchers. We, it was a male's voice. He says, I am a watcher. We are watchers. And then, and from there, it escalated. From there, it went from radio frequency to remote neuro monitoring. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that. I would assume so. It seems like that my name Floyd Hall and my presence is very, very well-known here in the city of Vallejo, even with local city employees. It just, it seems so. Even, even amongst the, our Vallejo's finest, our police department is also aware. However, just recently today, I'll just fast forward today, I'm in the library. I am charging my phone, making a call. My remote neuro data, it is a public, it is public information. It is going around throughout the city of Vallejo and adjacent cities. I've worked in the area, in the Bay Area for like five, almost five and a half years as a, as a local driver. And I recall coming, the first time I noticed that my neuro data is public information, I was driving through the, the city of Marin. So it's in Marin, Novato, Oakland, Vallejo, and I've heard even Vacaville. There are children that have access to my brain data, my neuro data. I go use the bathroom, people can feel in, 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 you know, and are in touch with me using the bathroom. I mean, this is against, you know, against every law that's, that we have as a.
Time.
It's, this is, it is preposterous that this is happening to me. Not just the neuro data, I am being harassed. I've been physically.
All right. We do have to cut you off because you're at time. Thank you.
Through the mayor, we did have one other speaker who accidentally signed up for consent calendar. Do we?
Okay, yeah, we actually do have some time because a couple of our speakers went short, so let's go ahead and bring them up.
Crystal G.
I'll be fast.
And you can lower it on your left if you'd like.
Thank you. Nice to see you all. It's been a while. Usually come through Zoom. Good evening. I'm here with the Vallejo Housing Justice Coalition. My name is Cristal. I know most of you. Hopefully, you all have had a chance to read the recent San Francisco Chronicle article that reported Vallejo as being the most cosburdened city in the entire Bay Area. Actually, quite shocking, right? Families spending far more than they can afford just to keep a roof over their heads. And you know, when housing instability rises, violence and harm rise to inside homes and also across the neighborhoods. People are being pushed into unsafe situations with real consequences. And we know all too well that delays in tenant protections have a cost. We want to start by acknowledging the work that city staff, especially in the planning department, have been diligently doing and begun to move work forward, particularly in our housing element, and putting out an RFP for the work. And we're really grateful for the collaboration. But in the meantime, families still hurt by waiting until long after September 2025, which is when the original ordinances should have been in front of all of you. And here we are in October. And just getting the RFP out, acknowledging the work, but also acknowledging the harm that exists with the delays and feeling the impact of the lack of the protection. So every month that we go without action means more displacement, more crisis in our city, and really more preventable harm. So although we're looking forward to working with new staff and to the RFP coming out, we know that the need is urgent, and the path is really clear. We're excited. Although the delay is here, we're asking you to prioritize the implementation so that the people of Vallejo can live with the stability, dignity, and safety that we're all working towards. Keep it short. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is that all our in-person speakers? All right. Thank you all. Anyone else wanting to address the council, you'll have an opportunity at our second forum. And we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. So we'll open a public comment on the consent calendar. And do we have anyone signed up at this time in person? So while the clock runs for anyone wishing to address us online, are there any items that council members would like to remove from the consent calendar? Councilmember Matthias.
H, please.
All right, so we're going to take item H, and that will become 8.1. I'm not seeing any others. Do we have any speakers online? All right. We are going to have to let the timer run out because we can't take action on that item until we close public comment. So we'll let that timer run. I can use, I'll use some of this time to read out the item that was pulled. So this is Resolution Finding the Project Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. So we're CEQA, amending fiscal year budget to appropriate $1 million of Monsanto settlement funds for the 50 Solano AV cleanup and monitoring compliance project. And that is step two of two. So that's what we're going to pull and have become item 8.1. All right, presuming we don't have anyone, we're going to go ahead and, we still have about 30 seconds, but let's go ahead and get a motion on this item. And this is for consent calendar and agenda.
Yes, I move that we approve the consent calendar, moving consent item H to item 8.1, and approving the agenda with continuing action item A, sorry, action item C until, to be continued until we have a Director of Finance in place, and action item E to be continued and discussed during the goal-setting session once that is scheduled.
All right. I, do we have any commenters? And I cannot see, I see Councilmember Matthias' light. Do you have a comment on this?
What was the piece about the finance director?
So the suggestion is that, and this was my item, and I support this, that we hold off on the creation of the Budget and Finance Ad Hoc Subcommittee until we have a finance director.
Excellent. Thank you.
Which is, which is being prioritized and coming in the, in the next few months.
Great. Thanks.
All right. Are we ready to vote? Yeah, we just all saw a UFO on our screen. I don't know.
The motion carries unanimously.
Well, we can't see. It carried unanimously. All right, so we're, yeah.
Yeah, I can see it down there.
It looks like Star Wars. All right, so joking aside, that is going to bring us now to item 8.1, previously consent item H, finding the 50 Solano AV Monsanto settlement funds exempt from CEQA. And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Matthias, who pulled the item.
Mayor, if I may, before we move on to.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify the motion. Did you, that prior motion which was voted on and adopted was to continue item 9C, the creation of the ad hoc subcommittee, as well as 9E, which were the scopes of the referrals?
Yeah, to have the referrals go to goal setting.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, Councilmember Matthias, go ahead.
Yeah, so maybe I was, maybe this wasn't a dream, but just to get out of the dream and into reality, I want to talk about Monsanto. So I'm willing to support this and vote for this particular action, but I do want there to be a discussion around the use of Monsanto funds. There's been two instances where staff has proposed the use of those funds, and we still have the housing element, which we have to adopt in the fall. And there may be other uses that the council may want to use those funds for. So I think we should have a discussion so that we're giving explicit direction to staff on allowable uses of those funds on a go-forward basis. So I would like any approval motion to carry that request that the Monsanto settlement funds, whatever is left of it, come back to the council for a discussion on it. That's it.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I was just wondering, maybe we could just, for the public's interest, could we explain what the Monsanto funding is, how much the, the total amount was, and if we know the current balance?
I can tell you what I know, and then the city manager can fill in. So this is a settlement for a class action that a number of California cities were involved in dealing with contamination that was caused by Monsanto with PCBs and other chemicals. Our share of the settlement, it settled, didn't go to trial. Monsanto decided to settle instead of fight it. So our, our share of the settlement was $4 million.
Yeah, and, and just to add, we, we had the $4 million at the top. We just spent eight or 900,000 on the police headquarters because of overruns, and now we're having to spend another million on this. So now we're down to half. And I said the housing element, but there is an environmental justice component attached to that, and that requires funding, folks. So I just want us to have a conversation about the remainder of that funding at a future date.
Councilmember Gordon, or did you get your questions? Councilmember Liddedew.
So can you explain 50 Solano, just why we're using the fence?
Yeah, Interim Public Works Director Alcantara can describe the need and linkage.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor Soares, council members. We actually have a little presentation on it to kind of better explain this, this location. So 50 Solano is located just north of the treatment plant along Sonoma, and it borders on the north side with the existing PG&E remediation site. So in 2022, the Regional Water Quality Board issued a letter of concurrence and comments. In 2023, ERS, our Environmental Risk Services, produced a remediation action plan. And just recently, the Regional Water Board approved the plan. The scope of work, as you can see in that, in that yellow hash mark, is to remove the contaminants, contaminants in the soil, install, install four monitoring wells, and conduct soil excavation, and come for a mandatory sampling and dispose of the soil. This is our projected estimates. How we get to the 1 million is groundwater temporary storage, trucking and disposable off hauling materials, transportation disposable of groundwater, trucking material costs and backfill material, and quality assurance, quality control plan, installation of monitoring wells totaling about $1 million. BCDC permit issued November of 2024. The permit states that the work must begin by November 30th of this year and completed by November 30th of 2027.
And there, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Alcantara, I was just gonna, I didn't, I thought maybe you were done, but if not, I'll just interject and note that separate, different from the opioid settlement funds, there does not need to be a nexus between the use of the funds, the Monsanto settlement funds, and the, the origination of the, the claim and lawsuit. The funds don't need to be used on remediation. We happen to be doing a remediation, proposing a remediation project for the use of these funds because we need to. funds because we need to get the remediation underway to meet our permitting requirements. And this is an available set of funds. City staff would be happy to come back to city council if it's included as part of the motion to provide a overview of the Monsanto funds, its past uses, and potential future uses.
Other questions? All right, I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. I move that we adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA and amending the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget to appropriate $1 million of the Monsanto settlement funds for the 50 Solano Ave cleanup and monitoring compliance project, step two of two, and request that we bring back the Monsanto funding project as, as a presentation to the council, including what has already been spent and future uses for the funding.
All right, and we're ready to vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. That's going to bring us to our action calendar, and I'll ask our city clerk to go ahead and announce item 9A.
Hold a public hearing to hear public testimony related to the issuance of 80 million of qualified 501(c)(3) bonds for the purpose of financing or refinancing the acquisition, rehabilitation, improvement, and equipping of Bay Village Apartments as required by the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, and continue the decision on a resolution to approve the financing to November 4th, 2025.
Go ahead, city manager Murray.
Thank you, if I may, I just want to provide a little, excuse me, context for the structure of this item. So this is a, as the staff report shows and as the item reads, this is a public hearing in order for a bond issuer, this particular bond issuer, the California Municipal Finance Authority, to issue bonds that are tax-exempt. There is a requirement that the, an agency in the jurisdiction in which the project that would benefit from the bonds would be approved, the, the jurisdiction and agency in that jurisdiction needs to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution that is essentially just an endorsement of the issuance of these bonds. The city doesn't have any financial responsibility for the repayment. That responsibility is entirely on the borrower, the nonprofit organization. We had noticed this public hearing for this evening, but in upon developing the background materials for presentation to the city council and public on this idea, on this item, we wanted to add a little more information on the public finance process, the role of CMFA, the role of the city, the role of the borrower. We wanted to supplement and strengthen the staff report a little bit. That was not, staff report was not ready in a form we wanted to be ready for, for presentation and discussion tonight. But we didn't want to re-notice the public hearing because there is a little bit of a time sensitivity to moving forward with this process. So what we're proposing for the city council's consideration this evening is that you open the public hearing so that we can be responsive to the notice, the public notice that was placed, that we continue it, and at the next council meeting, you receive a fuller staff report describing the project, the intended uses of the bond proceeds, the city's, you know, lack of financial responsibility for the bonds and other matters. So if this council is so willing, we would encourage that you continue the public hearing to a date certain, which is our next council meeting, November 4th, receive additional information at that time on the project, and make a decision, take action on the proposed resolution, which the city council can approve or not approve, which is the city council's endorsement of the issuance of the bonds. And happy to answer any questions about kind of why we've structured it that way, or if the city council would like to discuss the details of the project. Our housing director, Ms. Jones, is here.
All right. I have one, one thing to add to that. If you open the public hearing, if there's anyone here who wishes to speak on that item tonight, you will need to let them speak, and then you can have additional people speak if you decide to.
And then we, but then they would also be able to speak on the 4th upon hearing, if they've already spoken on the item.
If they've already spoken on the item, generally with the way a public hearing works, if they've already spoken on it, they wouldn't speak again. They get one shot.
I would like.
But that would be up to them if they want to tonight, or, or do it at the next meeting. That's.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
Not at this time.
Do we have anyone online? Okay, that, that works. That way people will have full, I, I want to make sure the public has full information when they comment on the item. Councilmember Lettuce, you had a question or comment?
I think another thing, city manager, and we've talked about this, who will be in attendance with authority on this subject matter at the public hearing? I think that's important.
So both this evening and at the public hearing, if it's continued, will be representatives from CMFA, from the, the facility, the target property, as well as the nonprofit affordable housing development. Representatives from all of those organizations have said that they'll be available, be present at the public hearing on the 4th, should any, the council have any questions that they'd like to answer.
I reviewed the staff report, and, and I'm also hearing city manager Murray this evening say that there's no financial responsibility to the city in connection to this project. Not on you, Mr. Murray, but I've heard that song way too many times. Don't worry about it, city's not going to be on the hook. So I would like some opinion from the city attorney's office that is backed by whatever analysis, you guys can figure that out, that gives me some peace of mind that that will not happen in this instance, because it's happened too many times. I don't want to just keep hearing it or see it in the staff report. I want to see the rationale that leads you to conclude that under no circumstance, the city's going to be on the hook for the issuance of these bonds.
And that's a request for, to be presented when it comes back next week. Councilmember Lettuce, you had one more thing, and then I'm hoping we can get to a motion.
So I would expect to the city attorney that there is an indemnification that can be a part of this process. And I've done a lot of research, and I know that at times, public entities actually do that. So if you could please do the research that further gives our community assurance and confidence that the city has no obligation. And I'm clear and understand how this process works. I know the laws around it. I know why we're doing what we're doing. But as I shared with our city manager, we have low trust or no trust in our city government. And so to council member Mathias' point, we have found ourselves figuring out how to financially deal with things. So again, let's find a way to give our community assurance. Thank you very much.
With that, do we have a vice mayor? I don't know if it's question or motion.
A question, I'm not sure that I'm allowed to ask it, but as long as Alicia's here, can you, can you just give to the public why the, the entrance to your building is closed, or it's all, the lines are all in front of it? And I've got a lot of emails about the building being closed. Is that accurate?
I don't think we can do that now, but I think we can ask for that in the city manager's report.
Okay. All right, well, then I will make a motion that we will continue the public hearing to November 4th, to hear the public testimony related to the issuance of the $80 million of qualified 501(c)(3) bonds for the purpose of financing or refinancing the acquisition, rehabilitation, improvement, and equipping of Bay Village Apartments as required by the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, and continue the decision on a resolution to approve the financing to November 4th, 2025.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and vote.
Missing one vote.
I don't, I think. The, yeah, I don't think that needs to be part of the motion. I don't, my understanding is that the direction, the question was the direction from earlier on what to include in next week's presentation was received. Correct? That doesn't need to be part of the motion, because the motion needs to formally continue this to next week. Yeah, good clarification.
Carrying unanimously.
All right, that is going to bring us to, thank you, Director Jones.
To the chair.
If it's related to the item, yeah.
To the chair. I just want to tell, Ms. Jones, thank you so much for your hard work. We've been getting a lot of good compliments.
All right, that is going to bring us to item 9B, and I'll ask our city clerk to introduce this item.
Public meeting regarding increased assessments in the Vallejo Tourism Business Improvement District and the levying and collection of assessments within the district and consideration of a resolution changing the date of the public hearing.
All right, thank you. So we'll go ahead and open up public comment on this item for anyone interested, or wishing to address the council in person or online. And we have our senior community development analyst here. Do we have a presentation on this item?
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. As was read, this is a public meeting regarding the increased assessment of Vallejo Tourism Bid. Next slide, please. A little bit of the background. In 2003, the city council reduced funding to the Vallejo Convention and Visitors Bureau. Because of the reduction, the Convention and Visitors Bureau requested the city establish the Vallejo Tourism Business Improvement District or Bid. In 2004, city council adopted an ordinance establishing the bid to levy and collect assessments within the district. Assessments were levied on all local hotels at a rate of $1 per room per night for hotels with more than 40 rooms, and $0.50 per room night for hotels with less than 40 rooms. Next slide, please. In 2007, the city of Vallejo completely eliminated its funding to CVB. Because of the elimination, CVB requested to increase the bid assessment. City council adopted a resolution approving the increase in assessments from $1 to $2 per room night for hotels with more than 40 rooms, and $0.50 to $1 per room night for hotels with less than 40 rooms. Next slide, please. In 2025, CVB requested an increase in the bid assessments. The proposed rates of $0.50 per room night to the existing bid effective January 1, 2026. The new rate would be $2.50 per room night for hotels with more than 40 rooms, and $1.50 per room night for hotels with 40 rooms or less, plus an additional $0.50 per room night increased effective January, January 1, 2027, bringing the rate to $3 per room night for hotels with more than 40 rooms, and $2 per room night for hotels with 40 rooms or less. The goal of the increase is to responsibly scale CVB's funding capacity to meet the rising cost and expanding efforts. The proposed increase assessment would be approximately $57,031 for fiscal year 2025-26, assuming January 1, 2026 as the effective date, and for fiscal year 26-27, approximately $114,063 for a two-year total of $228,126. Next slide, please. On October 14, 2025, the city council adopted resolution number 25-173, declaring the city council's intention to increase the assessments in the bid and to levy and collect assessments within, assessments within the district. Three days later, on October 17, 2025, they noticed a proposed assessment increase, and dates for the public meeting and public hearing and protest for the bid and the copy of the resolution were mailed to the 22 hotels. On October 21, 2025, Kurt Smith, president and CEO of CVB, convened a Vallejo Lodging Committee meeting to provide an update on the city council's action and the bid modification. Tonight's council action is to hold a public meeting and to adopt the resolution of changing the public hearing date to December 9, 2025. There was a, the date in the original resolution did not take into account a 45-day notice from the date that the notice had been sent out. That's the end of my presentation. I'm here for any questions.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public commenters in person or online on this item? And to clarify, for this item, we are merely, we are not making any decision on the assessments themselves. We are simply adopting a resolution to notice a public hearing for December 9th. Is that accurate?
So let me clarify that. So the public hearing's already been noticed with the correct date, and after we noticed the public hearing, we discovered that the resolution that you adopted at the last meeting contained the wrong date for the public hearing, so we're just modifying that. So the notice has gone out with the correct 45-day public hearing time period, which is the date that's in the, in the resolution this evening.
And we're okay? That's 45 days from now? We're compliant?
Yeah, we're just approving that date. We're not approving the actual assessment increase yet. That would happen at the next meeting.
And this is compliant with the 45 days that December 9th is?
Correct.
Is within that? Okay. In that case, do we, I'm not seeing any comments. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the public meeting regarding increased assessments in the Vallejo Tourism Business Improvement District and the levying and collection of assessments within the district and consideration of a resolution changing the date of the public hearing.
To December 9th, do we need to add that?
To December 9th, 2025.
Perfect. All right, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, we have continued item C to a future meeting. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. We have continued item C to a future meeting at the time when we have a Finance Director, which is in recruitment currently in process. So that is going to bring us to item D, which I will ask our city clerk to announce, please.
Discussion and direction on city council 2025 goal-setting process.
Good evening, council members. So we've had a couple conversations about the, a goal-setting process for the city council. I have some really brief background slides I'll cover quickly, and then we'll get into the heart of it. You all know that it's a best practice for governing boards to regularly review their organizational goals. The municipal code of Vallejo provides direction on this, says that council should have a regular meeting, or a special meeting, soon after its annual reorganization, determine its goals and relative priority of such goals. Then you can, city council, of course, is entitled to have additional goal-setting meetings as it would like. Kind of goal-setting meetings by governing boards often talk about specific goals or projects they'd like the organization to work on. They also often include a discussion and reconsideration, maybe update of mission, vision, and values for the organization. Over the past few years, the council has met for goal-setting early in the year generally, and it's usually been as part of a, through a one-day off-site goal-setting session, which is facilitated by a consultant. There's a little variation on that in 2024. Goal-setting has also in the past included council training and team building and some detailed work planning. It has been a two-day process in some cases in the past in Vallejo. We first started to talk about a process for goal-setting in, back in February, then staff and I think the council both got focused on some other priority issues, including public safety work and other things. The council had expressed that it wanted to have goal-setting scheduled after it had languished for a little bit, in part due to staff not having prioritized it. Council decided that it would like to have it addressed towards the end of the summer. We kind of put on the calendar a tentative date for September 2nd, but we didn't have a very robust conversation with the council. And there are a lot of different directions that the city council could take in goal-setting on all of these different dimensions. So we tentatively scheduled it for September 2nd, but we ended up canceling that so staff could come back to a meeting like we're doing this evening to get really specific direction. There were differing ideas that were expressed about, you know, the level and degree of training it might incorporate, the level and degree of team building it might incorporate, what kind of public engagement process we would use. I think in the past, we've had a couple different variations on that. Sometimes we've had really traditional public engagement, like we might have at a regular council meeting. Other times in the past, we've had more ambitious public engagement that has included tabling in districts. And so just to make sure that we're all on the same page and the council, the staff has clear direction so that we can clearly and faithfully implement it, this is an opportunity for the council to provide us with direction on some of these specifics, including things like location, number of sessions, facilitator, and the other. So upon your screen now is a list of different aspects of goal-setting that we would love to get your direction on so that we can move forward to plan and implement it. Happy to answer any questions, and happy for staff to take direction on these items so that we can get goal planning scheduled.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item? In person, none. Online, none. All right, I'm going to kick us off, and I would, it would be great, man, if you wouldn't mind putting back up that, I think that slide with the items for direction would be really helpful. I am beyond frustrated that it is the end of October, and we have not had goal-setting despite our code saying that goal-setting be held as soon as feasible after the end after the annual reorganization meeting each year. I have felt this multiple times, that a lot of the, the frustration up on this dais, having, not having set goals and to be able to come back to those goals has been, has not been acceptable. And I want to get this done. My priority is I want to get this done as soon as possible. So I, I actually am not, I don't have a strong preference on any of the things here. I would like there to be public input, and I would like us to set some goals and a plan to achieve them and a mechanism for some accountability that we achieve those goals. And I want it to be, I mean, we're, at this point, we're probably not even going to be able to have it by the end of the year, which means we're going to go a full year with a brand-new council, and we're going to be in a new election cycle, and we won't have even set goals with this new group when a majority of the council turned over. And we had a discussion about this on February 11. And I appreciate, City Manager Murray, I appreciate you saying that it just got lost in priorities. We had a meeting every week, February, March, and April. So it's not like we had a lot of time to burn or time that we could have done this. But like, I just want to get it done. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you so much. I think for me, the concern may be, for those out there, I had mouth, I have mouth surgery, so if I sound weird, that's why. But anyways, to me, the biggest concern that I have is how can you do goal-setting? We haven't did team-building. And every council has done team-building, and except for this particular council. Building trust is important amongst us. We are all powerhouse people who have goals in heart, but we have to have team-building included before we can do goal-setting. And that's my biggest concern. The other concern that I had was for the person that was recommended, they had no civic engagement. From what I looked upon, when I tried to call the individual that was, the consultants that was recommended, I couldn't even get a live person. So whoever we picked to help us with our goal-setting, they need to have, implement team-building. Because, City Manager, that's important. Every HR will tell you that team-building is important. And the person that we pick have to be able to help us communicate to you, staff. And for those who've already been here, that's understandable. But for us new folks, that's important. So I think we need to think about that as well. I'm not saying take a whole day, kumbaya. I'm not saying all that. Just the opportunity to build that trust and faith. So when we are asking for something, we know where it's coming from, and we get to know each other. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I would echo what Councilmember Gordon said. If you can put the items back up, sorry. I think five and six go hand in hand. I think if we could do that as day one, just doing the goal-setting, or sorry, team-building as the beginning, and then talking about the referral process and weighing out all of that in the afternoon, and then the second day be the actual goals. Once we've established our team and once we've determined what our priorities are based on all of the previous referrals, then we can look at focusing on what the actual goals are. And I agree, we absolutely have to have public input, not only at the meeting itself, but maybe if we could have some type of, way of having some type of input beforehand so that they have a time to, the public has time to weigh in on what our goal should be. I think we already have specific goals for the state that have been, you know, ongoing for year after year, but I think we should refresh those and see where we are as a new council. So that was my, my input. I don't have a preference for the location. I don't, I think two days is plenty if we do the first day, like I said, of team-building and the referral system. And then the second day is, is goal-setting. We definitely need a facilitator. Let's see if I have hit everything. We do need measure goals and strategies. So I'll leave it at that.
Thanks. Councilmember Paul Maris.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to go down the list. Location, the Cal Maritime was beautiful, but, you know, Vallejo Room is just as good. I don't have a real preference for that. Number of sessions, I think it's going to take at least two days, although I hope it doesn't go past two days. Facilitator, I forgot the name of the firm or persons who were involved last time, but I don't want them anymore. That's all. And number four, whether or not to address mission values, we could glide over that. That's not, I shouldn't take too long, but yes, we should. Team-building, definitely want to echo Councilmember Gordon. And just to expand on that point a little bit more, not just for sake of like, oh, we get to know each other. I don't want us to be a giant icebreaker, but, you know, get us in the mode of how to speak and work collaboratively. I think that's very important, not even amongst ourselves, but also with City Manager's office and the directors. Number six, whether to identify specific strategies. So this is very important. So it's one thing to have goals, but what I've noticed before in the last two years I've done this is that we'll kind of identify, I mean, we will identify goals. But one, it's, I think those goals mean different things to different people. I think that needs to be more concretized. And we should also really explore the, the strategies that blend together and build into those goals. To be clear, when we, the last, actually, we didn't even do it last time, but the first time we did it, it was like that dot democracy thing where we all just, oh, like, put in all your ideas in a blender, and then that becomes a strategy. That's not a good idea. So I think, like, having that facilitation to blend those ideas and produce a cohesive strategy, I think that'll be very beneficial for all of us. Performance measures, I don't think we need to get into that much detail because I know how long that takes, but I would expect that to come before council at some point. Material staff, what material staff should prepare in advance, you know, whatever makes sense. Corporate public output, input, of course, yes. Process for selecting facilitator. Are there options for selective facilitator? I don't even know how that usually goes about.
The City Council is using a process right now to select the facilitators of the city attorney and city manager's performance evaluations, where each council member will get to weigh in and look at the proposals. I think that's a good process that allows everybody to weigh in. So if, I would recommend that the City Council consider using a similar process for selecting a facilitator for the goal session.
Sure. And, you know, in, in those proposals, I mean, if they're speaking to, you know, whatever we decide as a council, if they could speak to those needs, then that's, that's great. Timeline for implementing goal-setting ASAP? Thank you.
So if I may, Councilmember Paul Maris, at some point, I'd love a motion that, and you might, somebody could break them up into different things. What you just stated sounded like a motion. I don't know if you were advancing it as such. I heard one other thing that was a little different prior in the conversation is about specifically doing some community engagement prior to the workshop itself. And so I think that would be valuable. I don't know if you want to incorporate that into, I don't know if you viewed what you just expressed as a motion necessarily. If you did, if you want to amend that to note that we're going to have more public communication and engagement before the workshop itself or the sessions themselves.
Sure. Whose idea is it for, was it yours?
My recommendation would be to hear from everybody before we get, do a motion, to do at least, to do one round from everybody, but we've got a structure for something.
Okay.
I'm going to go with one round, and then we'll come back. So Councilmember Lettigou.
One, I don't have any preference. Two, hopefully no more than two days. Three, we've just stated, based on your comment, how we're going to choose the facilitator. Four is typical. And five is fine. And six, strategies, projects. So my assumption is we will look at City Council referrals during that process. My assumption is that that list will be all-inclusive of all the referrals that we have made up to date, including any that are outstanding. In addition to strategies and projects and goals, I'd like to, and that for me is six, seven, and eight, I'd like to see, I don't, I'm not, I'm not particular what tool you use, but when you're talking about projects and all of the referrals, work can't get done and prioritized if we don't understand outstanding work that city staff are working on. So that includes hours of potential vacation, a metric that you come up with that allows for sick time, that really tell, holiday time that tells us, here are the available hours that staff have to work on projects. It doesn't, it's not helpful to have a whole list of referrals and not be able to really prioritize them based on data. That data is time available that staff have to work on actual projects that we're asking for. So I'm not sure how you're going to develop that particular, that data to tell us how many available staff hours there are to the council to get a set of work done. That's really important. And then, as it relates to implementing goal-setting, ASAP.
Councilmember Tulok.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm in general agreement with, with everything that's kind of been discussed and talked about here. I think one of the things, and to speak to Councilmember Lettigou's point, is I think, I think we, as this council, has shown is that we're data-driven. We're driven based on information that's provided to us. And when we don't get a certain level of information, it's very difficult for us as a group to be, be able to make some decisive decisions. So to Councilmember Lettigou's point, I'm hoping this, that's kind of built into our, our general request overall, is that there's a certain level of information, detailed enough information that allows us to make decisions. But at the same, at the same time, I think we, as a council, we've also proven is that we've actually sometimes overcomplicated the process, sometimes where we keep adding things on when we can't even get the basics done. So I would like us, as a council, to kind of reflect and identify if what we're asking staff to do is sometimes not achievable because, number one, they're working on certain stuff, which goes to what Councilmember Lettigou's point is that there, we need to have a baseline of what their capacity is. And from that point, to understand what they're, what they're able to do, but we, as a council, need to understand, if we're asking them something, what is that taking away from what their ability to do, to complete what they're already being asked to do. So I just want to make sure we're all, we're looking at the full picture of something like that.
Thank you. We're just missing Councilmember Tias. Do you have anything to add before I go back to, back to Councilmember Gordon? Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry about that. I wanted to mention, if you could put the screen back up for me, Manny, I appreciate it. So I would like to say, if we could go to Cal Maritime, not only do they have a beautiful view, but it's also set up that if we need something to be served to us, it's wonderful. And I wanted to go back down to how to incorporate the public input. I think I really celebrate the fact that we can get their concerns in advance. And if we can have it break down for us, you know, let's say we had 10 people for housing, we wouldn't, you know, we could probably do a checkpoint sort of thing. And that way, we can see what is a priority for them as well, if that makes sense. And then I agree with everything else my colleague said about the other goals. Thank you.
All right. I've been taking notes. I'm going to take a crack at summarizing this. The only thing I would add to the discussion of, and I don't know if it's team, the team-building portion or the process referral, I think we should have a conversation, and I mentioned this back in February, a conversation about our meeting goals and expectations for what we want to see at these meetings, because that was something I wanted to do early at the beginning of the year that, you know, clearly were, we're in need of. So based on the notes, I'm going to take a stab at, it sounds like a decent, oh, can we put that back up? Sorry. I'm going to go down the list. Sorry, Manny. You're the best. I'm working on it. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to try it, and then I'm going to see if anybody, if I missed anything. So I'm seeing two sessions, sounds like the preference, soft preference for Cal Maritime if it's available. We want a facilitator, and we want to do four, five, six, and seven. If staff can provide information on capacity, per Councilmember Lettigou's point and Councilmember Tulok's point, we would like public input, a survey in advance ideally, and then the public included in the meeting, it sounds like. This facilitator, the, a similar process, and then the timeline ASAP. My only question before I finalize that as a, as a motion is, to the City Manager, you know, we already put out an RFP as a city for a facilitator for goal-setting. Are we envisioning going back to that RFP, or do we need to put out another RFP? And I'll say for the record, my preference would be not to put on another RFP because we are not in needing to delay this any further.
We could use a similar solicitation, but I think we've learned through a bunch of recent processes of a number of organizations that do excellent work in this area. So I think we should do a new call for proposals.
Okay. So I would like to then, everything I just said and adding to number 10, a new RFP, but I, I would ask that it be released, like, this week, like, as soon as humanly possible, and that it be tightly turned around and gotten back to us so we can get this settled quickly. Councilmember Lettigou.
I'm sorry. Could you please explain? I missed your explanation of why we need to go back for an RFP that we've already put out, and it's been a lot of time.
Because I don't think we got as broad a set of proposals. And the RFP was structured around a particular vision for the timing of the goal-setting that was, you know, related to that September 2 meeting and had some specific parameters that are no longer consistent with this new direction. So we could certainly publish an RFP this week. And I think there are, so through some other RFP processes, I've learned of some new organizations recently that do really good work that didn't respond to our prior solicitation, who I think would be good to work with.
So what are the changes in the parameters? That would have been nice to have seen.
The earlier parameters that we would have goal-setting as part of a regular, or a regular or special council meeting on a weeknight evening, Mayor, that's something that you and I discussed specifically. So, yeah.
I thought we were looking at Saturdays, but it doesn't matter. We're beyond that.
Yeah. So, yeah. So we had, and it was on a short timeline, too.
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. It was, we hadn't decided on that in February, but after council members were polled for availability, we ended up on weeknights. It was based on the polling for availability.
That's right. So we issued an RFP for some very specific, a very specific format, and only a couple firms responded. I think only a couple firms felt like they could turn it around that quickly, like that model was going to be successful. Now we're talking with two sessions, breaking it up, including some team-building and other things, I think we'll get a much broader response.
So if, if I vote yes on this, I, I want to know that we do not miss the deadline. You said this week. We have three days left in this week.
I can issue the RFP this week.
Okay. And can we have it back? Councilmember Paul Maris, and then I'll come back.
All I want to say is that I agree with City Manager Murray about republishing the RFP. Just a point of reflection, I heart, it took like three times before we actually got our now, you know, Felon Institute as the vendor for that. So I think there's benefit to just, you know, republishing that, so.
So we're, yeah, I, I agree. I mean, we did, once the City Manager clarified that we didn't get the full, there were applicants that we might get now if we reissue it, I would like us to consider having a tight enough turnaround that we can have this back by the end of November for a, for a date select, so we can get polled for availability. Because we're, this is going to be in January realistically. I mean, there is very little odds, I would go ahead and say zero odds, that we're going to get this done before the end of the year. So I would like us to at least pick a facilitator and set the dates. So I would like us to at least pick a facilitator and set the dates by November so we can get that out to the public before the holidays. All right, that's my motion. Does that sound good to everybody? Any questions? All right, that, let's vote on it.
Motion carries with Councilmember Lettigus opposed.
All right. We have continued item E to, to the goal setting, and that is something we can continue to discuss if we end up getting delayed longer, but hopefully we'll have that in the next couple of months. That is going to bring us to our information calendar, and we have two information items this evening. I'll ask our city clerk to announce item 10A.
Fiscal year 2526, Community Development Block Grants, Subrecipient, Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California.
All right, we have Housing Director Jones back and our guest from, I'm assuming, Fair Housing Advocates, welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. Alicia Jones, Housing Director for the Housing and Community Development Department. Today I have a introduction for Ms. Caroline Peedy from Fair Housing, Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California. And I have a short intro, introduction to give a little background as far as why Ms. Peedy is here to present to you. Next slide. Some of the, some of the background will consist of our, our CDBG grant that we received from HUD and the public service requirements that are tied to those grant, those grant funds. Also, I'll go over the monitoring requirements and some of the challenges that the department faced currently as it relates to adhering to those requirements. And also I'll, I'll provide some information regarding the direct, direct award to Fancy, Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California, also known as Fancy. Next slide. So some of the background information, each, each fiscal year HUD, HUD awards grantees would, in this case, would be the City of Vallejo, a specific dollar amount for CDBG funds. Those funds can be used for eligible activities that align with the national, national objectives. But the use of the funds that we have received was outlined in the, the consolidated plan that was adopted, and it was from the period of 2025 through 2030. In addition to the consolidated plan, there's an annual action plan that identifies the activities that the, the department will take on through your guidance as council for the current fiscal year. The CDBG grant allows for 15% of the total amount received to be allocated specifically for public services, which means we can work with nonprofit organizations in your local community to assist low and moderate income families in the City of Vallejo in this case. The direct award versus an RFP, I wanted to give a little history. The background is historically the department would issue an RFP for nonprofits to apply for the public service funds. We received guidance from HUD with clarification on what we can do and what we, versus what we have been doing. So the difference between a contractor and a subrecipient is contracting services requires an RFP. However, under the grant program, the, a subrecipient, which is a nonprofit, you can do a, you can complete a direct award. You do not have to issue an RFP. Past practice, the agency have done that, but we are not required to do that. Next slide. So the requirements of the grantee, it's required for the agency to monitor the subrecipients on the services that they provide, the program compliance, to ensure that they're program compliant, and also the financial management of the grant funds that are received, meaning the nonprofit's ability to manage the financing of the, their finances of the funds that they have received. Also, we're required to train nonprofit organizations on applications and also the program requirements. All of this consists of staff time and available staff to conduct this particular, to adhere to this particular requirement. Historically, the department have selected four or five subrecipients through the RFP process with public services. And the challenges that we currently face and why we did, completed a direct award towards, to Fancy was because due to staffing capacity, we do not have the staff, enough staff to monitor five, four or five subrecipients in a county, in a fiscal year. So we, we use the recommendation from HUD to do a direct award based on a subrecipient themselves. Next slide. The direct award would be to, was, is to Fancy, our Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California, for the amount of $45,000. And the purpose of this award and why we, why Fancy was selected was to ensure alignment with the, the recent housing element that was published and is identified in the goals in the housing element to ensure that we provide housing, the city provides housing discrimination and monitoring and referral program. It's, it's designed to improve housing choice and access to opportunities for the Vallejo residents. And also, Fair Housing, Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California has been a recipient of CDBG grants for more than five years. So this is the reason they were selected as the direct award for the grant. Next slide. So there's a correction to this particular slide on the dollar amount that I would like to make sure is accounted for. The fiscal, for fiscal year 2526, the balance after the award, this, the amount you see in front of you is the actual amount we received for the fiscal year, but the balance would be $946,521. In addition to the award to Fancy, staff is prepared to provide, return to council for guidance on recommendations on eligible activities that's been outlined in our annual action plan, and those, that information will be forthcoming in future dates.
Thank you very much.
With that, that concludes my intro, and I would like to have Ms. Peedy provide you with a high, a overview of the work that, the wonderful work that they've done in the City of Vallejo and the population that, that has benefited from their services.
Thank you, Alicia. Is this on? Can you hear me? Thank you so much. Good evening. I'm really happy to be here to talk to you about one of my favorite things to talk about, which is fair housing. I think all of you may have the slides, but anyway, my name is Carolyn Peedy. I am the Executive Director of Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California, Fancy for short. Next slide, please. So our mission is to ensure equal housing opportunity and to educate the community on the value of diversity in our neighborhoods, and we work to maximize housing opportunities for everyone. Next slide, please. So it's interesting, what is fair housing? It's a, it's a question we get quite often about, you know, people will call us and say, this, this happened to me, and, and that's just not fair, but that's not necessarily what fair housing is about. Of course, it's about the right to choose from unlawful, free from unlawful discrimination, regardless of your protected class, meaning your race, your color, your national origin, your religion, your sex, your gender, your familial status, your disability, in California, source of income, marital status, age, citizenship, immigration status, and so on. There's also this concept of affirmatively furthering fair housing, or AFFH for short. I'm sure you're probably familiar with this concept, but the idea is to take meaningful and proactive actions to address historical patterns of segregation and discrimination and, and to foster inclusive communities. Next slide, please. Oh, you're, yeah, you're there, sorry. So our services for individuals include information and education, intake and counseling, investigation and referral of discrimination complaints. We also do foreclosure prevention counseling and do pre-purchase education as well. For the housing industry, we offer information and education. We, that includes various kinds of, of specialized trainings. And for the broader community at large, we offer educational and civil rights programs, and we also conduct systemic audits to, to, to make sure that there is compliance with fair housing laws. And we do a lot of advocacy for integrated, accessible, and affordable housing for all. I want to talk a little bit about our fair housing services in Vallejo. So in the previous three grant years, Vallejo residents, you know, who, who contacted us? Who was asking us? What are, what are the demographics of the folks who contacted us for assistance? 50% were black, 26% were Latinx, 53% had a mental or, and/or a physical disability, 18% were seniors, I liked that statistic since I am one, 83% were women, 41% had minor children in the home, 28% had a housing subsidy such as a Section 8 voucher, and 91% of them were low income, very low income, or extremely low income. We provide comprehensive fair housing services to clients in all protected classes, and that involves doing complaint intake, it involves doing referrals, it involves doing testing. I'm just kind of curious, how many of you know what fair housing testing is? Okay, I'm going to talk about it in a minute. It's about how we gather evidence for discrimination abilities and requesting reasonable accommodations and reasonable modifications from housing providers. And that, and a reasonable accommodation is a change that we're asking of a landlord that's basically necessary to make that, that person with a disability be able to use and access their housing better. And a reasonable modification involves physical changes to a unit necessary to make those, that, that particular unit accessible for a person with disabilities. We assisted 47 clients in Vallejo requesting reasonable accommodations and reasonable modifications, and 40 of them have, were granted and/or are pending. And the kinds of, of accommodations that were granted were things that involved stopping evictions, extending tenancies, and sometimes that's just what somebody needs to be able to find another place to live so they don't end up being homeless. It involved assistance animals, it involved remediating mold. Next slide, please. So testers, so we hire, we recruit, retain, we hire testers to investigate housing discrimination, and they're people who covertly pose as prospective tenants. So if we get a phone call from somebody who says, you know, I answered this Craigslist ad, I went to see this apartment unit and I didn't get the unit, or this person made it, you know, the, the manager made a really discriminatory comment, I think they are discriminating against me. Well, how do they prove that happens? It becomes like a he said, she said thing. So we will send out a black tester and a white tester and compare how were the two, two of them treated. And in the case of the, and, and was the black tester's experience replicating that of the person who came to us with the complaint? That's the only way sometimes that we can prove that discrimination has occurred. We also do, so that's a, that's an example of complaint-based testing, and we also test, we do audit testing. So it's a very controlled way of, and systematic way to assess whether people in the community, whether housing providers are, are in fact complying with fair housing laws. So what is it like for, we might test one year for what is it like with, for people with disabilities to try to access housing or get a reasonable accommodation? What is it like for somebody with a Section 8 voucher to try to rent and, and so on? So that's what we do. And based on what we find out, we can take further action to make sure that we change discriminatory practices. So since 2020, we have conducted 24 tests, and 15 of those in, in revealed evidence of discrimination and, and that the, we, we found two, we did two disability, two, sorry, disability tests that, that resulted in discrimination in, in a couple cases. Familial status, we found that four times, race was eight times, you know, in eight different tests, source of income in 11 different tests. And it may not sound like big, big numbers, but it actually represents, you know, each one of those can represent a case that we file and, and represent somebody through the process to try to get them, their, their discrimination addressed. Audit tests, we've done 76 in, in Vallejo since 2020, 36 of which evidenced discrimination. And I won't go through all the different audit tests that we've done, whether they're rental or late lending or appraisal tests in the city, but you can take a look at, at the ones that we did. Next slide, please. So one of the things we do is to file, we file and represent clients in the administrative complaint process with either HUD, although I can tell you right now, we're not, we're not, we're not sending a whole lot of complaints to HUD, not just because the government has shut down, but because this is a, this is a, an administration, a federal administration that is very hostile to fair housing, and I, that's just a whole other conversation. But, but we, we're very lucky that we have the California Civil Rights Department, the CRD, that, to whom we refer, to where we refer discrimination complaints. So we file complaints on behalf of, of clients who are alleging discrimination, and the whole idea is to get them some, to, to address that discrimination. Usually we're talking about a monetary award, we're talking about changing discriminatory policies, and then we as an agency will file complaints in order to change discriminatory policies in the community. Sometimes we will join other people, individual complainants, and sometimes we will file when there's no complainant because we need, we know we need to change that, those policies. We have filed 15 administrative complaints and lawsuits in Solano County. And I'm not going to talk about all of the education outreach that we do, but we do quite a lot. I'm sorry, next slide, please. Thank you. We do a lot of fair housing law and practice seminars for, and, and we've done that actually for the Vallejo Housing Authority. We've done know your rights trainings for tenants. We have, we actually have an annual fair housing conference that I hope that if you have not already attended via Zoom, that, that you will in few, in coming years. And we have, and every year we have a reasonable accommodation conference, which is about housing people with disabilities successfully, and we do other specialized trainings as well. Next slide, please. We do lots of fair housing, we do lots of different kinds of distribution of fair housing materials and educational campaigns, and we engage in policy advocacy and community meeting forums to advance fair housing and affirmatively furthering fair housing. Next slide, please. I want to talk a little bit about impact of services. So one of the things we do, as I alluded to before, is that we do one-on-one advocacy and counseling. We make sure that people's housing is stabilized, they, they, that we prevent homelessness. We want to make sure that we absolutely expand access to safe, habitable, and affordable housing, and that people's discrimination is addressed. And then, of course, there's the more systemic work that we do, where we do policy advocacy and, and work on case outcomes. We really want to expand access to rental housing for hundreds of low-income residents, and the really important piece of the systemic work that we do is that it signals to landlords that their housing laws are enforced. And I can't tell you how important that is, given the messages that are coming from the federal government. Next slide, please. So I want to tell you about a, a couple of examples of cases that we have settled recently. One was a race and source of income case. There was a black Section 8 voucher holder who was denied housing. She was a, she was somebody who had been left homeless for months because of a landlord's illegal policy, and the, and specifically around not accepting vouchers, which in the state of California is absolutely illegal. And testing confirmed that discrimination, and we represented her through the California Civil Rights Department, the complaint process. And the outcome was that we got $37,000 for her in her, in the settlement, plus landlord policy reform and training for, for, thank you. The client, of course, is now stably housed, and the message was sent to landlords that fair housing laws are still being enforced. Another example was, yes, you're on the right one, thank you, was when a black tenant, it was a disability and race case, where a black tenant was forced, forced out of unsafe housing because of mold, and it was black mold, her, it was confirmed by code enforcement, and she And she, her asthma got worse and worse and worse, and the landlord refused to address it. And so she alleged harassment due to race and disability. And we filed a complaint on her behalf and got her a $39,000 settlement. The family was able to move into safe, stable housing. And the landlord will receive their housing training, which is, of course, about opening opportunities for additional tenants. Next slide. Okay. I talked about systemic testing and making sure that the community is complying with fair housing law. So we did a testing audit that found widespread use of discriminatory criminal background checks at 30 rental properties. I'm sure you're probably all aware that when, you know, when people are, housing providers are using criminal histories, that it has a disproportionate impact on people of color. And therefore, it's really important that they are not, that they've got really good policies in place related to using criminal history as a, criminal records as a screening process. We found a, we filed a Civil Rights Department complaint against a very large landlord. And while we settled for $27,000, the more important piece was that there was a policy overhaul that went across the state of California. And that's one of the things I just really want to stress, is that even when we're doing, you know, filing a complaint against a landlord in Petaluma, that may be, that property management company is quite likely managing properties elsewhere, so it could be affecting residents in Vallejo. So this case that I was talking about, there are thousands of units now available to black and Latinx applicants across the state. Excuse me. So I just want to mention that based on that criminal records audit testing that we did, we now have ongoing cases against Vallejo landlords using similar discriminatory policies. And we are working towards some of the same systemic reform locally. Back in '22, we settled a case, actually, against Fannie Mae. It was a huge complaint. We actually joined forces with about 19 other fair housing organizations across the country, where we alleged race and national origin discrimination for their fail, Fannie Mae's failure to maintain and market foreclosed homes in communities of color in the same way that they were in white communities. And the outcome was that we had a big settlement in, that included the Vallejo Fairfield Metropolitan MSA. And we have actually two, and the whole idea is to, for, you know, that's to support neighborhood revitalization efforts. And we have two other lawsuits, actually, against Bank of America and Deutsche Bank, who are not playing ball, but we're involved in litigation. And hopefully, we will result in some sort of similar outcomes. I may be going to try, we may be going to trial in February, so keep your fingers crossed for us. Okay. Critical need for services. So the, you know, Vallejo residents face disproportionate barriers to housing choice and stability. There is a high rate, you can, you know, the research shows that there's a high rates of residential segregation and high rates of housing and lending discrimination complaints. And as I mentioned before, this is a federal government that is extremely hostile to fair housing. It's laid off, they've laid off a lot of, much of the fair housing staff at HUD's Fair Housing Equal Opportunity Department. They're also not accepting many types of fair housing complaints. They're really retreating from civil rights enforcement. So we really need local, local support. We really appreciated the city's support in the past, and I want to thank you for that, really has been important to us. And without, without it, you know, more residents are likely to lose their housing, remain homeless, have their housing be destabilized in some way. And very importantly, that discrimination will not go, will go unchallenged. I am not going to spend, I know I've spoken a lot, I'm sure that y'all are, you know, the evening's wearing on, so I'm not going to go through all of these statistics with you, but you can see there, the rates of discrimination based on race and color. You know, we received 147 Solano complaints of race discrimination since 2017, 69 of which were from Vallejo. And you can see the outcomes of the testing that we did. Next slide, please. Same for national origin, immigration status, that we've received 47 Solano complaints of national origin and immigration status discrimination, 19 of which were from Vallejo. And most often, that was discrimination against Latinx tenants. Next slide, please. Source of income has been a big, big thing since California law was passed since 2017. We've received 52 Solano complaints of source of income discrimination, of which 22 were from Vallejo. And that's usually about landlords refusing to accept Section 8. Next slide, please. And also, we've had a lot of familial status complaints. 12 out of 36 complaints were from the city of Vallejo. Next slide. Disability is a huge one. We get more, more complaints of disability every year, far more than, than any other kind of complaint. And we had received 439 Solano complaints of disability discrimination or a need for reasonable accommodations, 187 of which were from Vallejo. Next slide, please. So I am sure that you are all aware of this. The city of Vallejo has an affirmative obligation to administer its housing and community development programs in a manner that affirmatively furthers fair housing. Of course, that means to take meaningful actions to address segregation and disparities in access to opportunity. And a very easy way to do that is to continue to contract with Fancy to deliver fair housing services in a concrete and very impactful way for the city in order to, for it to meet its obligations to affirmatively further fair housing. I don't really need to talk about the draft consolidated plan because, Michelle, you did a great job of doing that already. And although it specifically talks about CDBG funds that will be distributed to Fancy in order to provide fair housing services. I do want to mention that while it hasn't been part of previous CDBG contracts, we certainly have the capacity and experience in the area of foreclosure prevention and homebuyer counseling programs. And so we're certainly willing to contract with the city to provide those services. Okay. And that's it. Thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much for this presentation, for joining us this evening. I'm going to go ahead and see if we have public comment, and then we'll open it up if council members have comments or questions. Doesn't look like we have anyone in person, nor do we have anyone online. Do council members have any questions or comments? We'll start with Councilmember Gordon.
Hello, good evening. Thank you so much for being here. I do appreciate this work because it is important. I get a lot of calls and emails and seeing how that Solano has one of the highest eviction rates. Unfortunately, landowners take advantage of what tenants don't know, right? And so I'm excited that you made this stand. For example, it has been 447 invictus filing pertinent legal rights service attorneys. And sometimes, it happens with them not even knowing, you know? And that is the hard part. And so I'm excited that you are here to protect them. And I'm glad, I would like to take up any classes you have. I do want, I'm glad to also see that landowners and managers are responsible as well to take these particular classes and training. So thank you and congratulations. We appreciate you. And thank you, Director Jones, for having them part of this program.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Councilmember Paul Morris.
Good evening. Thank you for your presentation and thank you for supporting our community. Would you consider algorithm-based tenant screening a prevalent problem in Vallejo or Solano County?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear you.
I'll repeat the question. Thank you. Would you consider algorithm-based tenant screening a prevalent problem in Vallejo or Solano County in general?
Yeah, it's something actually that we have, interesting that you brought that up. It is something that we have absolutely been looking into. There have been a couple of lawsuits around it, and certainly those are, it's not just in the city of Vallejo for sure, we're seeing it everywhere. And there are now a couple of big cases that are related to algorithmic, algorithm-based screening. And, you know, the question is, what is going into that algorithm? And quite often, they can be discriminatory. So I'm happy to, I was going to say, there's, my legal director, she were standing here, could probably tell you all about what's going on with those cases right now. It's not necessarily cases that, that we've filed, but that we're following very closely. And we definitely have a couple of cases that we have been, have been talking about, like, what should we do about these, you know, these particular issues? But we're seeing it everywhere. We certainly see it in the testing that we do.
Sure. And is there anything from the city perspective can we do to protect residents?
Such a good question. I want to kind of noodle on that a little bit because it may be a way in which we can partner.
Sure. And we could chat offline some other time.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that question, and I think it would be a great idea to see what we can do to collaborate on that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm not seeing any other questions or comments from city council. So I'll just, I'll thank you. It's so, I'm so grateful for the work you're doing. And I know it's, you know, it's truly, truly appreciated by tenants, and especially in this volatile, let's call it, at best, and hostile environment for affordable housing. We really appreciate the work that you're doing. So thank you for being here, and thank you, Director Jones.
I want to say thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate your time and your support.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
With that, we will move on to item 10B. I'll ask our city clerk to announce this item.
Broadway Project Monthly Update.
All right. And before, oh, wonderful, wonderful job, quick thinking. We have had a request for a short recess, which we can do prior to this item. So why don't we take, we'll aim for five, and then we'll start this update at 8:55. All right. I'm going to encourage council members to make your way back for our final item. All right. I'll go ahead and call us back. And before we begin the Broadway Project Monthly Update, we had a member of the public that had raised their hand during the previous item, but I don't believe was online when we officially took public comment. I wanted to see if that person's online and give them an opportunity to speak, since that was an informational item, there was no council action. So I just want to take that commenter.
Thank you, Mayor. Crystal G., please unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Thank you. Yes, I had to step away. I just wanted to, yes, I wanted to speak on the fair housing advocates. Thank you so much for that really powerful presentation, a lot of new data that we haven't had yet to access, and just wanted to raise that the Vallejo Housing Justice Coalition, along with other local, state, and regional partners, are working on a white paper to really break down the data. There's so much data in our county and in our city, including what was just shared by our friends at Fair Housing. So we just really want to uplift the work, the partnership, and the advocacy of fair housing of Northern California, as well as our legal partners at Legal Services, and really looking forward to working more closely with them and bringing together all of the data, not just to the community, but to council and to staff as well. So just wanted to give my thanks and gratitude there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. With that, let us move on to item 10B, Broadway Project Monthly Update. And this is our informational item, which was continued from the previous meeting. And we have Assistant City Manager Peterson here for a presentation. And before I turn it over to her, I want to clarify to the city manager that our, both our Assistant City Manager and our city attorney, who have been taking point on many
which is what we're anticipating to do, we should be able to start the first week of November, and be very close to meeting our goal lease-up date of the end of this calendar year. The HAP contract, which is the project-based voucher contract, will go into effect for December 1st, 2025, but that does not prohibit us from moving individuals in to the property before that goes into effect. Next slide, please. So, Resource Connect Solano, who is the coordinated entry provider for Solano County, has 43 individuals who are fully document-ready and ready to begin that background process. They are working closely with the other individuals who are at the top of the referral list to become document-ready. Most of those individuals have most of their documentation. They may be just missing one or two pieces, so they are actively engaging with them to do that as quickly as possible. As I mentioned on the previous slide, Aleca will be helping to expedite this lease-up process with doing the background checks and income verifications. And the individuals who are currently residing at the Navigation Center, who are towards the top of that list, the operator, there are five keys, is also working closely to help those individuals get document-ready, as well as all participants at the Navigation Center for any of their future housing endeavors. Next slide, please. So, funding update. The opioid funding will cover the operations prior to December 1st, 2025, when the HAP contract goes in. That's how we're able to make sure that we're moving people in and beginning that process before the HAP contract goes into place. And then the HAP funding will take effect 12/1, 2025, and those will call for the operations for the project. Staff will be returning to council for the opioid funding agreement to make some amendments for the funds that we've been calling the holdover funds in this kind of interim position, from almost being ready to move individuals in to moving them in, to take some of those upfront costs that we were anticipating for operations, to help cover some of the things like PG&E, electric, the electric, water, trash services that are still needed at the property prior to individuals moving in. So we'll be bringing that back at a future council meeting, once we kind of true up some of those numbers and know what the full amendment's going to look like. There have been a couple of delays in the project. There was a water line break in the manager's unit that caused some minor damage to the property. Nothing super significant, nothing that affected any of the residential units, besides the manager's unit, and the case conferencing, the case managers' offices, and some hallway space. So it should not prevent individuals from moving in, because there is going to be a little bit of lease-up time. We do have the option of putting the manager in one of the studio units while we move people in. Once that is addressed, we can move them into the manager's unit and then fill that, if the need arises, if it's not addressed, before we begin moving people in. So we're currently working on what that timeline is going to be, and getting Shelter, Inc., Firm Foundation, and the remediation company all on the same timeline. Additionally, as I mentioned earlier, there were some insurance issues. Those have all been resolved. We're just waiting for the final certificates of insurance to come through to the city. A quick review from risk management to make sure that everything is on the paper, the way that we agreed that it would be on there, at which point, the city will be able to execute the agreement and start the background checks, income verification, and start leasing out the units. So with that, that is the end of my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions that we can, or bring back information at a future date if needed.
All right. Thank you very much. Why don't we go ahead and take public comment on the item? Do we have anyone in person? We have one online. All right. I'm not seeing any lights. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go first. And I'm gonna say that this, this item wasn't on the agenda originally for this council meeting. I asked, followed up to ask why, because it had been continued at the request of staff from the previous meeting. And I don't know, other council members may have also inquired. And it, this has resulted in Assistant City Manager Peterson giving the presentation. But I think the public deserves more transparency than is being provided here, to no fault of our presenter. And the, the truth is that this has been a very, very, very frustrating couple of months. And there have been, for, for the public, without disclosing anything specific, this has now come up several times in closed session, and I can't disclose anything in closed session. This has come up several times. Councilmember Lettigew and I had to get involved and start sitting in on meetings to resolve some very, very serious issues. And it said on the presentation, holdover costs continue to accumulate. And I'm gonna turn it to the city manager. Can we clarify how much, the public deserves to know what's going on with this project. We've been through enough. Can we clarify how much these delays are costing us? Because this project was supposed to open in August. How, how much in dollar value, taxpayer dollars, are we losing on this project?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information. I think we have a figure for the weekly holdover cost. I don't have it off the top of my head, and I don't know that I have access to it. Ms. Peterson, do you know what that amount is?
We're kind of a high-level estimate with being out during some of these conversations, is it's roughly $18,000 a week that we are running over in terms of security and other just need-to-haves to keep the property maintained until move-ins.
Okay. Thank you for that. So we're losing $18,000 a week with every week that passes that this project doesn't get leased up. And I want to call out the former Vice Mayor, Laura Diaz, who last year requested an audit on this project. That occurred last year. It was presented to the city council in December. I took office, I had a conversation with the city manager probably in February, and I said, you know, this project has been troubled. There's been tens of millions potentially of taxpayer dollars lost on cost overruns after the promises were made, let's say, that there was going to be a performance bond in place that was going to prevent any cost overrun, and that there would be no impact to the general fund. And to councilmember Mathias' point earlier about, on the, on the housing bond, this is one of those examples where council was told a certain thing, and that ended up not being true. And the MRG report had several recommendations that were made available last December. And the, one of the first conversations that I had in, in February with the city manager, and one of the first conversations we had on this dais, was, are the systems in place? What is being put in place? And are there systems in place to make sure that there are no further issues with this project? And I was assured, yes, this project is going to be under control. And we've now had $600,000 that we've had to pull from opioid funds, and now we're losing $18,000 a week for every week that passes that this doesn't get open. And this is above the Assistant City Manager's pay grade. I want to be really clear about that, because I thank you for coming and presenting today. This is, this is a serious, serious, this project has been just a serious leadership failure. And I'm, I'm really, I think this council, I don't want to, I don't want to keep on revisiting the past, but I think this council has a responsibility to our residents, to let residents know what's happening with their money, and what's happening with their tax dollars. And I would like to request that we get a breakdown of where this funding is going to come from for these cost overruns, and what mechanisms of accountability are taking place for now the third round of cost overruns of this project, post-audit. Post-audit, post-knowing that we had these issues, we're still having these cost overruns, where is that money getting pulled from, and who's going to be held accountable? And how, I mean, at this point, we already said in February, what are we doing to make sure this doesn't happen again? Now it's happening again. So what's the accountability mechanism? I'm, I mean, I'm just, $18,000 a week, like, these, this, these are people's hard-earned tax dollars. And there was an expectation that this was going to be resolved. And I'm, I'm just, my patience with this is completely, is completely done, having sat up here now for 10 months, and still seeing, still seeing this get, still seeing this get delayed. And but for councilmember Lettigew, I will say, because I was in those meetings, but for councilmember Lettigew, I don't know that those agreements would have been signed by the parties. This, this took intervention to get going. And it's not to diminish the work staff did to keep it going, but this, this was, this has not been smooth, especially over the past few months. So I'll kick it over to the city manager. Anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I think that's, I wouldn't really agree with your characterization of the history of events there. I think what was identified in the assessment are some of the shortcomings in how, in the project development. And I think what was pledged and committed to was that the city would put in place practices to not get itself into another situation like this. There are certain, there's a certain path dependency with this specific project that we couldn't undo, including related to our partners and some of the obligations of the grant. So I wouldn't, I think the, I would characterize it differently, which is to say that what staff committed to doing in follow-up to the needs assessment was to put practices and policies and procedures in place, so we didn't get ourselves into a similar situation, which we haven't yet with another project. We haven't gone and entered a partnership with any other project, because the foundation of the partnership, I think, had some challenges. City staff did not say that the city, in order to complete this project and get it tenanted, that no additional funds, at least I did not say, were going to be required. We were already committed and obligated to a certain partnership and model for this project that we needed to then implement as efficiently as we could. So I think your characterization is quite different from my characterization. It's not to say that this project doesn't have some very, very significant challenges. And I think we've learned a lot. But I just need to say that I don't think that we promised that, I mean, I think what we committed to doing was completing this project as efficiently as we could. And that's had many, many challenges. I'm not going to disagree with it. But I don't think we said we were going to fix everything about this project. That's not what we said we were going to do. What we said we were going to do is put practices in place so that we didn't repeat the mistakes of this project.
So that's understood. And to be clear, the, the solution has been just to not undertake any additional projects. We've just declined any other affordable housing proposal. I, I don't think, I've sat through now 10 of these monthly updates. I don't think at any point it was clear to this council that it was going to take until December for this thing to open. And that's really what I'm speaking to, is that all, it, it just feels
your work getting us to the finish line. We've spent a lot of money on this project.
like every month, we're told a deadline, and every month, that deadline's pushed back. And I understand if you can't put the toothpaste back in the tube if the project was broken
We've litigated this, this whole project and expedition for years and years and years.
from the beginning, but this has just been such a debacle. And I just think the community
And we now stand a month away from getting folks off the street and into housing, which
deserves more transparency. If we have to own that, if we have to own that, let's own
is a commitment that the council made. It has come at a cost, a very painful cost to
it. But I just, I'm, I'm very, 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 very frustrated. 10 months in now, at a
the community, because we have scarce resources. But I don't want to personally continue to
project that I was already very frustrated at coming into office. Councilmember Mathias?
spend time relitigating things that we've litigated for years and years and years. We have a responsibility as a council to look at the MRG report, to look at those recommendations, and make sure that we're asking the city manager for updates on the implementation of said recommendations. But I don't think it's, respectfully, I just don't think that it's a good use of our time as a community to continue to bash and bash and bash and bash the project over and over and over again. I'm really pissed about it, because my name is actually on the Measure P ballot measure. I was for the tax measure, and we had to put over $3 million into that project. And I could spend the rest of my term arguing and complaining about that, and yet, what I'm looking forward to is that on December 1st, based on what you're sharing, this evening, we will start to get people off the streets and into housing. That's what I care about. Separate and aside from that, we, each one of us has a job, right, as, as elected officials. And we signed up for these jobs. There's a lot of stuff that you guys don't see in between meetings. And, you know, in this instance, we, each one of the, each one of us does a lot of work. But in this instance, I do want to publicly express my appreciation and gratitude to councilmember Lettigew, who did play an instrumental role in just getting this piece across the finish line in partnership with staff. I would be remiss if I didn't do that. So I am thankful, Natalie, to you and the rest of the team for getting this across the finish line. There's a lot of learnings that we will hold each other accountable to on a go-forward basis. But I would just ask the rest of the council that we stop the, you know, the bashing every meeting around this, because we're at the finish line, folks. 99%. Yes, it's cost us tens of millions of dollars. And it sucks. It's horrible. I wish we wouldn't have spent this kind of money. And yet, we can't pull the plug on it. We got to move forward. And we have to focus now on, like, how do we get sustained funding to fund that project and to fund the navigation? What's our homelessness strategy? That's a more future-oriented discussion that I want to have, instead of just coming here and engaging in that every meeting. I, I just don't find any more use in that. So, thank you.
Councilmember Palmaras?
It wasn't Councilmember Gordon. It is me.
Do you want to go ahead?
I respectfully want to concede to Councilmember Gordon.
I agree with the city manager. We were told that it was going to be some delays. And I do recall that we agreed that two of our members would reach out to individuals that weren't sure or weren't on board. But because of the relationship, it was wonderful that we were able to cross the line. So I'd like to say thank you to both my colleagues for helping us get to the line. But I cannot agree that we were not aware I'm really pissed about it because my name is actually on the Measure P ballot measure. I was for the tax measure, and we had to put over three million dollars into that project, and I could spend the rest of my term arguing and complaining about that, and yet what I'm looking forward to is that on December 1st, based on what you're sharing, this evening, we will start to get people off the streets and into housing. That's what I care about. Separate and aside from that, we, each one of us has a job, right, as, as elected officials, and we signed up for these jobs. There's a lot of stuff that you guys don't see in between meetings, and, you know, in this instance, we, each one of the, each one of us does a lot of work, but in this instance, I do want to publicly express my appreciation and gratitude to Councilmember Letu, who did play instrumental role in just getting this piece across the finish line in partnership with staff. I would be remiss if I didn't do that. So I am thankful, Natalie, to you and the rest of the team for getting this across the finish line. There's a lot of learnings that we will hold each other accountable to on a go-forward basis, but I would just ask the rest of the council that we stop the, you know, the bashing every meeting around this because we're at the finish line, folks. Ninety-nine percent, yes, it's cost us tens of millions of dollars, and it sucks, it's horrible, I wish we wouldn't have spent this kind of money, and yet we can't pull the plug on it, we got to move forward, and we have to focus now on like, how do we get sustained funding to fund that project and to fund the navigation? What's our homelessness strategy? That's a more future-oriented discussion that I want to have, instead of just coming here and engaging in that every meeting. I, I just don't find any more use in that, so, thank you.
Councilmember Palmaras.
It wasn't Councilmember Gordon? It is me.
Do you want to go ahead?
I, I respectfully want to concede to Councilmember Gordon.
I agree with the, the city manager. We were told that it was going to be some delays, and I do recall that we agreed that two of our members would reach out to individuals that weren't sure or weren't on board, but because of the relationship, it was wonderful that we were able to cross the line, so I like to say thank you to both our, my colleagues for helping us get to the line, but I cannot agree that we were not aware, and we can't, we can only be responsible for ourselves, we can't be responsible for others, and there were, the disagreement didn't have nothing to do with the city, it had to do with two other individuals that was partnered to this. And so I'm excited that, that the staff didn't give up, and that they wanted to make sure that we get quality, reliable individuals who are going to make a difference in individuals' lives. And so I agree with the city manager that, the way I saw it, is that we were aware of this complications that were brought before us. And again, I feel like staff really did a lot of hard work, and they need to get their koodles and like they do with the navigation center, put a lot of work into that, and just this week alone, we have had to mine laws from District Six, three individuals that went into the navigation center that at first did not want to go. So, and we had a lot of people doing the same thing they're doing with Broadway Project. Now they're doing, they do the same thing with the navigation center, and so now I just ask us to please let us stop. You have a right to be upset, you have a right to be frustrated, the city has a right because it's their tax dollars, but we need to do it in a way where we would want someone to communicate to us. But again, I don't feel this was staff's fault a hundred percent at all. I think it's just everybody wants to make sure they're safe, they want to make sure that they're going to be getting their rights and getting their dollars, but that, again, we can't take that on staff, and so I agree with the city manager and my colleague, excuse me.
Vice Mayor. Oh, yeah, Councilmember Palmaras, because we're doing the weird light thing. Councilmember Palmaras.
It's fine, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to thank staff for taking us across the finish line. This was a tough project, and it just kept on getting tougher, and I felt like any conceivable way this would go wrong, it did go wrong, but I, I really appreciate, for those who are here and who aren't here, I do express my gratitude. And I also just want to kind of reflect a little bit about what the mayor said and, you know, what the city manager also said in, in reply. I think there are truths into both of what you're saying, and I think both of those, a, a, a large amount of your comments can both be true at the same time. To the mayor's point, I totally understand that frustration. I, I echo that frustration, and I think there is also not only room, but we have a, a duty to push for transparency and accountability, and, and that should always be true. But to the city manager's point, I, in my opinion, I, from what I understand and from what I have seen, I don't think there were new variables that were introduced that we could have avoided. I mean, a lot of this was just things that were manifesting from just a bad situation to begin with, and we're trying to make the best of it. So I don't know if we could have done anything better, and I, I don't think that, right now, I mean, we just did the best job we could, but, but at the end, though, I mean, if, if we want to look under the hood, see what we could have done better, I mean, I think that's always worthy of a conversation, but I, I wouldn't paint it as black and white. So that's my statement. Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Yes, having been here from groundbreaking to now, I am here to celebrate with you all. I think this is a, a great moment in our history in Vallejo in getting our unhoused residents into housing. I want to thank you and all of your partners. I want to thank the city attorney's office and your partners, the city manager office and your partners, and especially the council. I know this has been a very long, treacherous route, and I, I think that I'm just here to make sure that we all celebrate the, the goodness that's happening here. I, I do have a question about move-in, and if there's opportunities, do you still need volunteers to help with move-in or furniture or things that are still needing to be set up or placed? Is all of that taken care of already?
So furniture install has been accomplished. I think as we begin to move individuals in, there may be people who need help with physically moving boxes in and/or transporting items, so as we learn who those first set of residents are and when that will be, if there is the request or desire for additional support, I'm happy to share that with council and the community who would like to assist in that.
Thank you. Yes, please do. That's all I have. Thanks.
Councilmember Matulak.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I agree with basically what everybody's talked about at this point, and I think to, to the point, and with the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Palmaras, that we've been here since the beginning when this all started, and even before that, to a certain extent, when we came into the middle of a lot of the, the issues that the navigation center came into. So we, as, the three of us, we, we have learned a lot of growing pains through this, and, and I think we realize as a, as a council and even as a city that this is not our forte to be running projects like this, to manage projects like this. So I think that these are lessons learned that moving forward to where, and, and a lot of this has to do with the lack of, the, the, the lack of bandwidth, let's put it that way, and the lack of expertise internally to be able to handle such complex projects. So I think, I would like to think that we've learned, we're learning from this to know if we, that, that, once again, this is not our expertise, and, and we shouldn't try to take these on unless we have that expertise in-house to be able to do this. So, so with that being said, I, I'm, I would like to move us forward with the, let's celebrate that what is actually coming good out of this, and the fact that we've got the navigation center already open and, and with this Broadway project about to be open, we, we are making significant dent in, in our unhoused population, helping support them, and I think it's to Councilmember Matias's point, is that we need to identify the long-term, the, the long-game strategy for, for projects like this, to make sure we have this, the ability to sustain the, the resources and services to that. But once again, I think we, we all owe a debt of gratitude to Councilmember Letu, to getting, getting us across the finish line with, with her internal contacts and her expertise in, in dealing with projects like this. So I just want to celebrate us across the board, but also identify that we, there were quite a few hard and painful lessons that we did learn from this, and let's make sure that we don't repeat the, the, the adverse effects of, of what we had to learn from this, moving forward.
All right. Seeing nothing from Councilmember Letu, I'll, I'll just say that I would, it would be good to have an update, and I forget the last time we talked about this, on the implementation of the MRG recommendations, because I remember this council giving direction, I want to say, back in May or June, and I don't know if there's any update on the status of the implementation of those recommendations. Here comes our other Assistant City Manager.
Hi, Nalungo Conley, Assistant City Manager. So you will have an item coming to you on the eighteenth of November, and that will actually be the response to the MRG recommendations. So we did issue an RFP for an affordable housing consultant, we did review proposals, and we made a selection, so we will be bringing that forward then.
Thank you for that update. And that's, that is music to all of our ears, and there was one other comment I was going to add. We'll have one more of these, I think, right before the opening. As much as we can do to communicate with the public, that, I think, has been the biggest miss in the past few months, has been that the community was told that it was going to open in August, then it was going to open in October, and now it's been, going to open in December. I would just encourage in between now and the next update, the city to release some information as to what's been going on and what we're, what we're anticipating, and that we can stick to those, stick to those December deadlines, so we're not stuck here like Groundhog Day with another delay. So again, thank you very much for taking that on, Natalie. Thank you for the update to ACM Conley, and with that, I think we're ready to close the item, which is going to bring us to our city manager's report.
Good evening. A few things to update you on, as we discussed earlier today. We'll be issuing an RFP for, support for council goal-setting later this week. We'll be issuing the RFP for the Warming Center tomorrow, so we're taking a slightly different tack, as you know. For the past few years, we have established some criteria that says that under certain climatic conditions, we'll open usually a public building on an as-needed basis to serve as a warming center. We're going to try a new approach this year. We're issuing an RFP to find an organization that can open a warming center every night throughout the winter, basically. So rather than it being triggered and happening occasionally on a somewhat unplanned basis, which I think unhoused folks and others find hard to plan around, we're looking for an organization that can just be open every single night, overnight, for a, a number of months, and we have funding that had previously been allocated of seventy thousand dollars, so we'll be looking for one, possibly two facilities centrally located that can house up to a hundred people. So that'll be coming out later this week. There's a lot of going on around town related to Halloween. You'll see that in the weekly and in other social media posts. Also, of course, as we enter Halloween and the holiday season, want everybody to be mindful of public safety issues. There's some information that has been posted recently on police and fires' social media about holiday safety tips, so encourage you to please take a look at those. And two final things, this Thursday, we'll have our appreciation, annual appreciation event for our board and commissioners, so to recognize those, I hope you'll all stop by. And finally, the city issued the payment to the sheriff's office today for the startup costs for the sheriff's office support, so that payment was due by the end of this month. We deposited with them today, and that planning is all underway. That's it for this evening. I did ask Director Jones if she could stay. I know that Councilmember Brigenzar had a question about the Housing Department's open hours, and so we've been problem-solving on that, and Director Jones can respond to your question, Councilmember Brigenzar. Director Jones, can you let us know about some of the strategies that we've been considering and planning to reopen the public counter at the Housing Department? I know we've had conversation with some other council members to get some ideas and are taking some steps on that.
Good evening. So the Housing Department, the Housing Department is not closed, is not closed. We're full, we're operational with the exception of the lobby hours due to limited staffing capacity. We don't have enough staff to address the needs of the public, so we had to make the difficult decision to close the lobby for walk-ins only. We provided the option for participants of the programs to request a direct meeting with their housing specialists, and for the general public, they can continue to use our email address, housing@cityofvallejo.net, and also our phone number to submit their inquiries, and we have a rotating basis with the existing staff that we have to address those inquiries as we receive them, in addition to staff meeting with the, we're meeting with their clients on a one-on-one. The office appointment options are from Tuesday, Tuesday and Thursday from eight to twelve each day, and for the inquiries, we have, we're working on a forty-eight-hour turnaround period to respond, but depending on staffing, if we can respond in forty-eight hours, so it may extend beyond that period, but our goal is forty-eight hours. We're currently in the process of hiring. We've hired, well, extended offer letters to three new housing specialists, hopefully that will go smoothly, and they are anticipated to start on December the fifteenth. And then also, we have our administrative clerk position that's open right now for recruitment to establish an eligibility list for the city so that we can hire additional administrative support to help with the front desk. We're also looking at the option of an extra help to help with administrative component, and also seeking support from our partnering directors in, in the City of Vallejo to see if any of their admin team can assist us during this period. We would like to reopen as soon as possible, and so any support that we receive, we will use that support in an effort to reopen to the public, just to have someone available to address the, you know, initial needs and respond, and we can respond at a later time on more in-depth information that they need.
And may I just, there's one other thing. We've been working with a consulting firm to provide us with some, to do some project-based work, and we're talking with them about expanding their services, which would free up city staff to do more public-facing work. Do we have a, an estimate on when we think we will be able to reopen the public hours? I know we've got those offers out for new hires, although they're not going to start for a little while. Are we prepared to say anything about when we think the public counter might reopen? Or can we provide the city council with an update on that sometime soon?
We can provide city council with an update sometime soon because we're, we're still working out the issues of staffing the front desk. We don't, as, as I say, we don't have anyone to staff, staff the front desk. So right now, we're working to see what we can do to open up. Hopefully, we can open up in the next, in the next, within the next month, fully, but we need the support in order to do that, and the extra hire help will assist with that, but we have to go through the HR process.
So, may I ask a question?
And may I address one additional comment?
We're probably, we're probably pushing it.
Sure.
But go ahead and add your additional comment, and then we might need to agendize a discussion of this item at our next meeting, if, if possible, because I think it's urgent and needed, but having this type of back and forth during the city manager's report is probably not okay. But go ahead with your additional comment, Director Jones.
Okay. So the, the consultant that was mentioned, Alaka Consultants, are assisting the department with the annual recertifications and the rent increases that we receive for our vacant desk.
All right, well, thank you for that update, and then I'll, we'll follow up. I see you, Councilmember Letu, but we, I, I think we're pushing it with a back and forth on this item during your comment. We'll, we'll do that during the council comment, and then we'll see if we want to have, maybe have an update on this at a, at a future meeting, because I think it's really important, and it would be good with the current, you know, the shutdown and the federal situation to, to talk about what's, what's going on. So thank you very much. That's going to bring us to our city attorney's report, which is item twelve, and Chief Assistant City Attorney Reisner, we have a, we have a report this quarter.
Mayor and council, thank you. Our report is attached in your packet. It provides the statistics that we've been asked to provide every quarter, and this is our first-quarter report for twenty-five, twenty-six. I'm not going to spend your time going through all the statistics that are in the report because I think it's all there for you now.
I'd like to make one request, and this is something I brought up, I think in the first-quarter report and the second-quarter report, the first and second report that this council got, so the third and fourth quarter reports last year, I think if we're going to include information on the payments that the city received, we should also include information on the payments that were paid out by the city, and I'd like to request that that be included in future reports. Seeing no other comment, that is going to bring us to our second community forum. If we can open up the public comment clock for the second community forum, we went through all our in-person speakers earlier. Do we have anyone in person? Is there anyone with their hands raised yet at this time, Manny? So what I'm going to do is, we can't have anyone that didn't, yeah, only people that didn't address the council on the first community forum. So what I'll do is move us on to the request for future agenda items or special projects, and then we'll do that in our, our council reports, and I'll then come back to community forum to verify if anyone raised their hands. I see councilmembers Palmaras and Matias. Go ahead, Councilmember Palmaras.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two requests. The first request is to report back on options that will encourage and empower us to conduct city business more collaboratively, collaboratively and efficiently. I do have some recommendations, if you, if I could entertain you. Revamp our rules for running our meetings, improve the knowledge management regarding requests and direction, open up more opportunities for study more opportunities for study sessions and one-on-one conversations ahead of the city council meetings. Enroll city council and train in how to communicate collaboratively as a team. And conduct regular anonymous surveys of city staff on their interaction with city council. But all this is under the umbrella of reporting back options on encouraging and empowering us to work more collaboratively and efficiently. My second request, and this is a little bit more personal, in response to the recent suspension of federal funding to CalFresh, I'm requesting that we reach out to and help coordinate with food banks, volunteer groups, businesses, health and social services, and other government agencies to support Vallejo residents who are being impacted. And as that's ongoing, if council approves, I'd like to be invited to those conversations. And city manager, do we vote on this now, or should we wait until the very end?
Probably easier to vote on those now as we go.
Okay.
These referrals.
And we're, Councilmember Palmaras, did you write these down?
Yes. If you want me to email it to you later, I can.
Yes, please.
And I'll just do verbatim.
Which of the first two would you like the council to vote on first?
Let's just go first, report back on options that will encourage and empower us to conduct city business more collaboratively and efficiently.
So this would be a vote for, to direct staff to scope this item?
Yes.
And this would be to then add it to the big list that we just kicked to goal-setting?
Ask a clarifying question.
Vice Mayor's going to ask a clarifying question.
Is that something that we can add to the team-building portion of the goal-setting? Or is that you want to have a separate process from that?
Separate from that. I still believe that we should, you know, work on team-building at that. But I still think that we need to, I mean, that's only one part of it. And I think that's, should be an ongoing training for all of this council.
Okay. And this is just a, this is just a scope?
Yes.
Okay.
So, do we vote on this now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Tulak has a clarifying question.
Just from a clarifying question, if we're asking staffs to do something to this extent, what is staff's capacity to do something like this?
This is just adding an item to the referral list that we will then scope. Yeah. And then the city council will prioritize that when it does its prioritization, which council decided to do as part of goal-setting.
Okay. That, that makes more sense to me. Yeah. So it would get added, the understanding is that it would get added to the list of referrals that would then get brought to us at goal-setting for prioritization. All right. And then we have the CalFresh food bank request.
Yes. Do you want me to reiterate that, Mayor?
Well, I'll look around. I mean, as long as, yeah.
And I also want to be clear about this.
Sorry. I also want to be clear about this. Because of the urgent need that a lot of folks are going to need, I don't want this to be something that we wait on. I think this is something we could give direction on now, and we could just execute as soon as possible.
Councilmember Lettersu has a question.
Yeah. So these conversations have been going on. We've been meeting, Cassandra James' office has been meeting with Nalongo, our Assistant City Manager. And so I think we need to come up with a different strategy, because it's not just connecting people to a food bank. There's a list out that we can literally put out in community right today. And the real question around this whole issue is not solely a list. Just like Napa, they voted to put in X amount of dollars to assist families. So what is the real solution if we're talking about a right-now kind of conversation? So I think that's really important, because we do have a list that we can put out today. And the county has been talking about this. And so we can easily coordinate and bring that list forward.
So, I'd like to ask a question. So have we been working specifically on CalFresh benefits? Can anyone answer that?
So, not specifically CalFresh. I think we've had conversations just about the overall impact of the shutdown and what is looming for mid-November. So there's the impact on CalFresh, there's the impact on housing vouchers. I mean, it's just...
Can I make, can I make a suggestion? I don't mean to cut you off.
Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion? Because I, I see what you're going for now with this refer, with this request.
Yeah.
I'm, I personally, and I can't speak for everybody else, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with trying to put something through that's going to leapfrog the other 55 referrals that we have sitting in the pipe. But what if we combine this with what the discussion we were having earlier about housing, and we request an agenda item for November on the shutdown and the various elements, the programs that are going to get cut, Medicaid, SNAP, i.e. CalFresh, and then housing. And that way, we can get it in the more short-term in a way that's kind of holistic and speaks to the current situation.
Make decisions.
And then we can make more, more kind of informed decisions and more, yeah, and just in the moment, have good information, with current information.
Sorry. Can you maybe wrap that up a little bit more?
I was saying, what if, if the goal is to have this discussion ASAP, I personally would, I would be comfortable having it lumped together with a broader discussion of the federal cuts and the shutdown and all of the elements, because we were just talking about bringing back a housing item, potentially, because we had some questions from council that we couldn't ask during that report. What if we brought it all together as a sort of federal cuts and shutdown implications for Vallejo, and then we could give direction off of that item?
And what is that happening?
I mean, I would be saying, let's have it like ASAP, because we're in it.
Right.
That's my, that's just my suggestion.
Do the chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Gordon.
November 4th is already published, so it doesn't matter. This is the next public meeting.
Go ahead, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I have to concur with my colleague, Palmaras, because I have been getting a lot of calls and plus email. Matter of fact, I got a call today because of this fear. I think what I hear him saying is that let's get into helping right now, because November is the cutoff. This is the, it's happening already. And I think that what he's just asking is that we get it, get it on the agenda so that we can move forward. It's not going to hurt us. And so I think that that's what he's asking. And I think the city deserves to know that we are taking this urgently, and that we're not going to wait for anybody to come save us.
And Councilmember Lettersu, did you have something to add? I saw your light come on.
No, I'm just simply making a statement. It does, it's, the conversations are happening. And Councilmember Palmaras, you're actually on a couple of those emails where we all can be on a conversation, having the, and moving things forward, because those are county dollars, and we need to figure out what the solution's going to be, whether it's county, or whether we as a city need to figure out where we're going to put in some dollars. So those conversations are happening week by week. And I think we have a meeting coming up where you could get on so we can push forward.
Okay.
And then bring it also back to council, get it on an agenda so it's a wider discussion, as mentioned.
So it sounds like we're all on the same, it sounds like we're actually kind of all on the same page.
Yeah.
Councilmember, go ahead, and then we'll get to Councilmember Matias.
I was just going to say that I agree with the mayor. It should be an update item on the agenda for the 18th. We're getting these update emails every day on the shutdown. Clearly, the city management team should be getting those emails and really thinking about what does that mean for our community, right? And they should be formulating some sort of response. And we should just get an update on what that is. And that could be coordination with the county, coordination with our profits, as Councilmember Palmaras' point. But I don't feel like we need to have a meeting soon to tell city staff to do something that they should already be doing. It should more be a report out of, like, if you guys are doing work right now, push it out to the community so folks know where to go for what. And then on the 18th, we get a readout of all of that, all of those, these different efforts and calls that everybody's having, just to summarize all the things.
Yeah. I think that's, and I think we're all saying the same, I think we're all kind of saying the same thing. I would inquire, and I'm forgetting earlier in the meeting, I thought we had something that we were already going to amend the agenda for next week to add something. The, did we not just continue something to next Tuesday?
No.
Or it was, it's already on there.
The tougher public hearing.
It's the public hearing, it's already on there. Okay. I mean, if they're, just because of how current this is, if there's a way to get it on the 4th, it might be, it might be good, just because of the shutdown. But if that's, if that's too tight, then I think the 18th makes sense. I just worry that that's, that's three weeks away, so we're losing valuable time.
So I can provide an update as part of my city manager report at the meeting on the 4th?
That would be perfect. I think that's great.
Just, okay.
Yeah. I think that's perfect. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I think part of my confusion is, since I'm not part of the conversation that you're having with Supervisor James, I don't have any information to put out to the community. So I think that's probably why my reaction was the way it was, because I'm not part of the conversation.
And that's fair, Councilmember Gordon. And I'm going to point us all back to the very fact, when we began the government potential shutdown and the emails were going out, I specifically asked the city manager to ensure that all council members were receiving those updates. Those updates would be summarized, if possible, so that we could understand what was going on, what, and if we take it a step further, just as Councilmember Matias has stated, the reason I asked for that was so that the city itself could begin to determine what it was going to do and how it would collaborate with the county. His colleague is the CAO, and so my expectation is, and my past experience is, when we are having a government shutdown, state funding being paused in any way, we are collaborating at each and every level that's appropriate. And council members should know what's going on. So that was my whole reason for pushing, for asking the question, what is being said at the federal level? How are we getting this information at the city level? And what are we doing with it? And I made that explicit request to our city manager. So I fully understand what you're saying.
So putting it all together, and if this is okay with Councilmember Palmaras, I don't know if we need, if we need to take a formal vote, we can take a formal vote on it. I, my suggestion is we're requesting agendas on November 18th, an update on implications of government shutdown and any other kind of federal cuts that are looming, depending on the status of the shutdown, and, you know, what Vallejo is doing. And then we can have a discussion if there's anything else needed. And that next week, we have a conversation specifically in the city manager's update, if that's all right. Although, depending on how things go in the next few days, we may want to add an agenda item, because benefits, my understanding is benefits are going to get cut November 1st. So we kind of, time is kind of of the essence. On, right, is that, I mean, that's why you're bringing this up, right, Councilmember Palmaras, is because CalFresh, I mean, CalFresh is, the funding isn't going to be available starting November 1st.
Yeah. I mean, it is, this is halfway getting through the mark. I, you know, I'm going to be at that meeting tomorrow, but I can't guarantee I'm going to be at every meeting during the daytime or workday, as far as like what we're, you know, what our response is going to be as a city with regard to HR1. My concern is, you know, are these just conversations to have conversations? Or does, you know, Assistant City Manager Conley, does she have any kind of authority to coordinate or say, hey, like, can we work together on this? That, that part is unclear to me. If she does, then great. Then I don't necessarily have to be at every meeting. But if she doesn't, then I think we need to kind of hash that out.
Okay. Go ahead, city manager.
Yeah. So the, I mean, the city staff have some authority to contribute staff time to things that we think are in the interest of the community, but not a lot of financial resources. So as was mentioned, we're participating in these conversations, but we're happy to receive some direction from the city council when we have these conversations with the council about where you would like us to be more proactive. Yeah. So I guess I'll leave it at that.
All right. Why, why don't we vote on, if we need to, well, we need to, yeah, we need to vote on this item, or are you, are we okay with the direction?
Vote on it, please.
Sorry. Can I add one more thing, then? So just, nothing gets lost, because I learned this last two weeks ago. So in addition to everything that we're saying, the conversations that Assistant City Manager Conley's having, I want to be very explicit that I want us to have the conversation with regard to CalFresh benefits. Like, I don't want it to be, just be, maybe we'll talk about it, but I want to be very explicit that we're going to be conversing about that, and we're going to think about how we could better coordinate.
All right. Go ahead, Councilmember Tulak.
So from a clarifying question, the fact we've used the word "conversation," are there any Brown Act violations if we're having all these communications and emails of decision-making that isn't in a, in a forum like this?
I think he's referring to the actual agenda item when he says "conversation." Like, he's referring to the...
But it sounds like he, we talked about ongoing conversations.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
See, that's what he's talking about.
If there are four of you talking about it, yes, that's a problem.
So that's my question is, is, because I know Councilmember Lettersu's talking to Supervisor James, and it sounds like Councilmember Palmaras wants to potentially chime in on stuff, and if we...
That's okay, as long as there are only two of them.
Okay. So just as long as we're not to the, so let's be clear that we as a council, that we're not, there's, there's no quorum that's talking.
And then the other, the other caveat to that is, you can't then come back and call everybody up and tell them what you talked about and find out if they're going to support it.
All right. Councilmember Lettersu, one more. I got Councilmember Lettersu.
Oh, sorry.
Come back.
I think fundamentally, I find it quite strange with the fact that as a government entity, where we are experiencing a federal shutdown, that we as a city, from a city manager perspective, as we're going through this process, you have access to our CAO at the county level, where all these discussions are taking place, where you as a city manager, from my perspective, should be talking with the CAO. I don't know if that's happening or not. And also devising a strategy of what can the city do? Here are the impacts. We have individuals who work on our behalf, who are liaisons to the federal government, giving your staff the information. And the question really becomes, what is the full impact, the CAO has that information, for our Vallejo community? What is the county going to do as a pass-through, who receives the pass-through funds and is actually providing those dollars from the county? And what potentially do we need to do, and what funding could we possibly use if needed to help? And what is the county potentially going to do as well? Everyone's having these conversations. And as someone who has served as a public servant for a very long time, responsible for over 16,000 lives, we, I have directed staff to do an impact analysis where that can be provided to executive leadership. So those are the kinds of things that I expect to see and happen, even though, yes, information is coming down. But you are the agency head who can go talk to your colleague, who is the agency head of the county. So I'm not sure how you're having these conversations, and how, when these conversations are had at the ACM level, what strategies are being thought about to bring back to the county. That is part of the commission and responsibility of the city manager's office. And I need, and I am saying that on the record, because that is what I also am expecting, to be able to see, for a group of us to make a decision about what can we do if the county can only do this much? What is the delta? And what is the possibilities? And that would have to come through your office.
So I'd just like to offer a different perspective on that. So I don't think it's the responsibility of the city manager or the city staff to accommodate and plan around and plan around changes of programs and services of all other levels of government. So, I think that's certainly something that we need to monitor, and if it's the, if it's a priority of the city councils, to try and intervene and compensate. But for instance, let's say our local transit authority decides to reduce services, is it the responsibility of city staff to identify a way to compensate for that? We're not the service providers. It does, it does create a gap, and it's something that the city could decide to get involved in, but it's not a core responsibility of the city. So, I would not say that, in general, it's the responsibility of city staff to identify gaps in service provision by other levels of government, but it's certainly something city staff can do and sometimes does do. If the city council would like city staff to get more involved in that, we're certainly happy to do that. But it's, I mean, I don't, it's kind of a fundamental question, but I don't think it's the responsibility of the city to fill gaps that are being created by the reduction of services at other levels of government. So, happy to do it if it's council's direction to do that, but I wouldn't say that that's a core and clearly identified responsibility of the city or city staff.
So, I'm going to respectfully reject that notion.
Okay.
Because I'm not talking about transportation. I'm talking about food that sustains a group of people. I'm talking about housing that keeps people stabilized on a day-to-day basis. And I would agree that, from a transportation perspective, I might fully agree with you, but not when I'm talking about food and shelter. And so, even for our city to be able to bring forth information, tie it together, and then say, as you all know, here are the things that we've been following, here's what we know, and here's what we could potentially, what next would you like us to do? I think that is a responsible thing to do, when we can say that, one, for every three residents in this city, one individual is receiving some type of subsidy, especially food and housing. So, that's really important. And I understand what you're saying, but I would reject that notion.
I'm going to jump in. We are, we're really pushing it now, as we're just scoping out future items, so I want to center us back. I think what we're coming to is a request for an item, I mean, potentially next week, but at least the 18th, covering specifically CalFresh and other federal implications of the shutdown and cuts. And I see Councilmember Gordon and Councilmember Mathias, and then we, we've got to vote on this. This is, we're, we're pushing it on Brown Act.
Thank you. I just want to add, I want to, first of all, say thank you to my colleague for bringing this conversation up, and, and we're very passionate from the staff and to the council to make sure that our residents are taken care of, and remembering that we have two board of supervisors that we should be having conversations with, besides just one. So, I would like to add, to your, to your request, Councilmember Palmaras, is that we ask for the list to be put on our website and on our social media, because, like I said, people are not aware of a lot of the things that is moving to help them, they're just mostly in fear right now.
And that request will have to make, although we can, to give that direction privately, that request will have to make when the item gets agendized at the future meeting, because right now, all we're able to do is put something on a future agenda. So, we're putting this item on the agenda. Councilmember Mathias, another comment on this or another item? Back to your other request.
I have items.
Okay, so we're going to vote on Councilmember Palmaras, and then we'll come back to you. All right, let's vote on this request. Do we have enough clarity on what it is? Okay. Let's vote. That's for no later, thank you very much, no later than November 18th, specifically CalFresh and other implications of shutdown. Councilmember Mathias, another future agenda request.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is, uh, this is in the same vein as Councilmember Palmaras, and I would like council support for this one right out the gate, because it's more immediate in nature, and it's also related to federal action. So, we've seen news reports multiple times since the start of this year about immigration enforcement operations across the Bay Area, and I will just speak for myself, anytime those reports are out in the community, I'm sure, Mayor, you get a ton of emails, I mean, everybody here gets emails, and I'm usually like checking up with the city manager's office, what are we putting out, you know, what's our press release look like, what is our plan of action, what are we sharing out with the community? And so, I would like for us to have a more formulaic process by which this information is, one, communicated out to the public, and we, and two, we know sort of what, what is expected, or what actions we can take in our positions to get the word out, and make sure that we're also connected to organizations that are supporting folks on the ground. We have an immigrant community here, and we need to make sure that they're supported. And I don't want to put, just in full transparency, like, this has happened with the most recent one this past weekend, that we thought folks were going to come in and engage in raids. I think this is probably the third or fourth time this year that I've reached out to your office, like, hey, can you do this? Can you do that? Can you do this? Can you? And so, I just want to make sure we're proactively telling the community, this is our plan, this is how we're going to handle things, these are previous actions that other councils took, they passed a resolution, VPD's not going to engage in partnering with law enforcement, federal law enforcement in these operations. Like, I just want to, want us to be more proactive in nature, and that could just be an outline of what actions we would take in the event that something like that were to happen in our community. So, that's a very, it could be part of your city manager's report out, where you just share out what steps you would take, and how you think about this work, but I just want us to get more in a proactive phase when it comes to this issue, instead of the reactive phase we've been in.
And I'm going to pivot that, I'm going to try to circle that into maybe a very similar vote to the one we just took, which is a request for an update and ASAP agenda item, to discuss the city's strategy and, and response and communication around immigration enforcement? Does that, does that capture? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on that. Thank you, and you had one more? Go ahead.
Because this is the second time I'm asking for this. So, these two items, I do want included in the referrals list, and I brought them up in the last meeting. The first one is an enhanced infrastructure district, and having us have a discussion around that. We have aging infrastructure, and that is a mechanism that many cities use across California to capture any property tax increases, and sort of set that aside in a fund to specifically focus on whether that's infrastructure enhancements, affordable housing, downtown revitalization, you name the project, but it's a mechanism used to be able to finance projects. And so, I just want us to have a discussion as a council around that tool, if you guys don't mind. So, I would, would want that to be added to the referral list. And then the second item that I would like added to the referral list is an evaluation and consideration of a build-out of a convention and events center in the city of Vallejo. So, I would also like that to be added to the referral list.
Okay, and those were previous requests. Do we need to vote on those?
They weren't voted on last meeting, so we should vote on them tonight.
All right, let's vote on them right now.
So, that's why Councilmember Mathias was raising them again. So, Councilmember Mathias, which of those would you like to vote on, have voted on first?
Uh, we can start with the enhanced infrastructure district first.
All right, and then we'll do the other one, the build-out of convention and events center.
Yes.
Can I ask, just really quick before, how come there are signs on Highway 80 when you're turning on Tennessee Street, that convention center with arrows? Do we have a convention center here, or do we ever have a convention center here?
I don't know that we can even talk about that right now, but I, it's worth folding into the item. Maybe that can be added to the item, is what is the sign? Yeah, so let's vote on that.
So, the second item is that, yes. Thank you.
All right, and Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you so much. To the city manager, I would like to ask if we could look into having a city town hall meeting with our residents of all that we are doing. Again, I like to highlight the fact with, with the shutdowns, a lot of people are not clear, so I think if we have a city, a city town hall meeting, I think it would be really beneficial to the community, because it's a lot happening, and hearing it from every walk of life, no matter what district we live in. At first, I was going to ask for my district, but hearing my colleagues, it seems like we're all having this concern, so maybe just having a city hall meeting would be, would be important. And it saves the city money, too, because we're having just one. And, because, and then also having at that city hall meeting, information that we put out to make Vallejo a safe city, and we can maybe even partner with Vallejo Unified School District, and any other schools that, and any, maybe can partner with us, too, because they have fears there as well. And so, and again, people are holding their kids home from school, because of ICE, they're, they're scared, and then also to the insecurity of not being able to purchase groceries, paying their bills. So, I think if we have a city hall meeting with a lot of resources there, I think it would be very time consumed, I apologize, it would save us a lot of time.
So, I'm going to ask the city manager, is that, that sounds like a request for community meetings. In the past, the city has held those, and that's not something that typically goes through a city council meeting. Is that something staff can consider and follow up with in the absence of us creating a formal agenda item?
Um, this, the, yeah, I think actually the periodic town halls that the city had been holding were in response to council direction on those. If, Councilmember Gordon, do, do I understand that the town hall would be focused on immigration and federal benefits?
Absolutely.
Okay, so those, that would be the, the focus area of the town hall. I would suggest that perhaps we, well, that's a fine referral, you all can vote on that. Another option would be to discuss that when we talk about federal programs on November 18th, and the city council at that time could decide if they wanted to have a town hall to share information as an outcome of that.
That actually might make more sense and get it done quicker. Are you okay with that, Councilmember Gordon?
I think if my colleagues agree with that, I can, I can, I can hold off.
I think that makes sense to go ahead and, and plan on giving direction there, rather than putting it through a separate referral. That would be quicker.
Thank you, some nods from everybody. Okay, thank you.
All right. I'm seeing none other, so why don't we come back to community forums? Has anyone raised their hands online?
Sorry to interrupt, Mayor, if I may.
Wait, oh, go ahead.
There, there were a few referrals that were made at the last meeting that didn't end up eventually getting voted on. There's one more that hasn't been raised again. Councilmember Mathias raised his, too, and Councilmember Palmaras raised his. Councilmember Gordon, at the last meeting, also requested a referral, and I just wanted you to remind you of that, that hadn't been voted on, if you want that to be considered tonight. That was about researching options to start council meetings earlier. Would you like your colleagues to vote on whether to create that as a referral?
I would like to wait after our team building. Is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
At your discretion. Okay, thank you.
All right. Do we have anyone signed up for community forums? Any hand raised? All right, seeing none, that's going to bring us to report of the presiding officer and members of the city council. Do any of my colleagues have anything to report? I have a quick, go, go ahead, Councilmember Gordon.
Yes, I just wanted to say real quick that I had an opportunity to participate in a lot of town hall meetings, well, not town hall, I apologize, resident meetings, and they are really pleased with what's happening in my district. Caltrans is going to be working, starting their phases from, starting from Cal Poly all the way to Mini Drive, and so, we're excited about that. As we know, we lost a 19-year-old in District 6, and I, they did a beautiful memorial for her, and we just want to make sure that we are looking after our youth, and so, that phased me into our late-night basketball. We had a celebration to end for this season. We had over 30 people show up to recognize them for their participation and their support. I want to thank publicly Louis Michael, because he really put it together and did a phenomenal job. I want to thank the city for their participation, and I want to thank all of the communities, including the lead, the district attorney, and the probation office, the Vallejo PD, and our fire department, and many, many others. I could be here for days. So, I want to thank everyone for helping us with that. The report was, we fed over 700 youth. We had over 200 register and participate, and any given night, we had over 74 to 100 children participate. So, I want to thank everyone for that. You said you'd provide, the tribe provide the T-shirts, and also the hoodies and basketball, so, and then we volunteers got T-shirts. So, I want to thank everyone for their participation. I do have a lot more, but for the sake of time, I want to get out of here at 11:00, as we promised. I'll hold off for later, but we, we're moving forward, and I love that about Vallejo. We are not moving back, and I'm excited. Thank you.
Councilmember Tulok.
Thank you, Mayor, and just quickly also, I just want to congratulate the city of putting, putting together, once again, another successful national night out that occurred in early October. The fact it was later this year than, than August than when we've had it in the past, I think we were expecting cooler weather. I don't think we achieved that this time around, so, so maybe, maybe we, maybe we in the, I think it was the county directive to move it back, so maybe, maybe they need to reevaluate that. Along with that, right after National Night Out, I think there were quite a few of us that, or some of us that made it to the League of Cities National down in Long Beach. So, I want to congratulate the council members that were able to get together and collaborate and attend a lot of the great classes that, that were offered down there. I think those that did go, it was ended with a, with a very inspirational motivational speech from Erin Brockvich, and she actually has a personal connection to Vallejo, when she was here advocating from, over in Rodeo, from those, from, from a lot of the refineries and a lot of the issues that were going on in the 70s and 80s over there. So, so Erin Brockvich has a, has confirmed that she does have a personal connection to, to Vallejo, and remembers us very well. And then I just want to give a quick shout out to, in the past, I kind of highlighted a, a local establishment, and I'd like to congratulate Manny's Steakhouse, because this past weekend, I was part of a golf tournament that was run by the Knights of Columbus, along with the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce in Apapa. We had a golf tournament this past Saturday, and Manny's Steakhouse was the one that hosted the, the post-golf tournament get-together, and so, we had a successful turnout of over 60 golfers that, that participated in that on Saturday. So, thank you to that, and that'd be the end of my report.
All right, seeing no others, I'll close this out. I have a few updates, one of which is, a couple weeks ago, I held a town hall on, or a listening session on State Route 37, along with Supervisor Mitch Mashburn, which was really important. really important to me, to get him down to Vallejo, so he could hear from our residents and advocate for us, as he is our representative on M T C. And he and I sit on that policy committee. And I want to thank Manny for helping us take, with the video for that meeting, because that is available, and I need to post that. That was delivered very promptly, but we have not yet posted it. For any members of the community that weren't able to make it and want to hear that, feedback is still encouraged. And M T C has posted a survey, asking for input on the toll. I did see that the city posted the survey, and I do want to clarify, I think the wording on the city's post confused a lot of people. The way that the city's social media post stated the survey was that their Caltrans is exploring a toll to reduce congestion on Highway 37, and the toll isn't the mechanism to reduce congestion. The mechanism to reduce congestion is widening the road, and the way to widen the road is to potentially fund it through a toll. So I think that created a little bit of a storm of people. And obviously, we're all opposed to a toll, but that contextualization and understanding of why the tolling was selected, and some of the limitations and trade-offs we have to consider, was something that Supervisor Mashburn and I talked a lot about at the town hall. So for folks that have opinions on that and want to weigh in, I'd encourage you to watch the town hall video, or reach out to me, or, and/or complete that survey. The second update I have, and Mr. Kirk Smith from Visit, from Visit Vallejo was just, just left. Vallejo submitted an application to host the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, State Sam Hispanic Chamber of Commerce's annual conference, which was a long-shot bid, and got selected as one of the finalists, and ended up finishing second to Oakland. Oakland was selected, but it was really a huge victory and a great experience for seeing folks come together from our local Hispanic chamber, the hotels, the courtyard by Marriott, and Six Flags, and the fairer, and the city and everybody, and the chief was there at the pitch. And so it was a really positive experience, and I wanted to thank everybody that was involved, and I think that was a really great showing for Vallejo. I also had the opportunity to attend a convening that was held by Oakland Mayor Barbara Lee around regional gun violence. It was something that she ran on in her campaign for mayor of Oakland, was a regional approach to gun violence, and she was very clear that she wanted Vallejo added to that corridor. So she convened seven, the mayors of seven cities, I think it was eight cities, actually, and some representatives from those cities, from their police departments and violence intervention teams, for an initial convening. And that was really wonderful, to be able to, to start building that regional infrastructure. And we had a few, several folks, ACM Conley was there, Sergeant Hollis was there, some of our violence intervention, Councilmember Lettis you, some of our violence intervention folks doing the work on the ground. And so I wanted to note that and say that there are going to be, this was a kickoff of a project, and so I'll be able to provide those updates as soon as we have them, about what the next steps are, and what that collaboration looks like. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention, since we just had the immigration conversations, is that the U S Conference of Mayors recently has started a regional initiative, where the mayors of different states form coalitions. And the one that formed in California, because we have too many cities, the one that formed in California was the C-13 of the largest California cities. And the C-13 met last week in San Francisco in person. There was a press conference. It was really powerful, and I think allowed for some really powerful collaboration around the looming ICE raids and looming threats that were coming to the area. And so there was definitely a recognition amongst mayors, both at the gun safety, gun violence convening, and coming out of the C-13, that we need to be able to use those networks to more nimbly respond to things that were going on. So locally, obviously, the mayors of San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose are part of that, and they're in touch with folks from throughout California. And so I'm doing, you know, my part to, to stay in touch with those folks, and get report outs from that, and figure out how we can regionally respond if stuff happens. And then the final thing that I want to close with is just that I have been, I think as we had this discussion of referrals, I do want to follow up on the delayed items that this council has been sitting on, that we've given direction on this year. And so I wanted to list them out, and then I'm going to work to follow up with the city manager. We just, I've been getting a lot of questions from the community about where we are with certain things, and I just want to name the things that are still lingering. So we approved performance auditing funding in February, that I think we, I would like to get an update on by the end of the year, because we've gotten a lot, we've been getting a lot of questions on where we are with audits. The whistleblower policy that was supposed to be back in July, that's still lingering. The council approved funding for community and violence intervention programming, that there's not been follow-up, follow-up on. The Housing Justice Coalition earlier mentioned the housing element, eviction protections and inclusionary zoning that were supposed to be in September. So those are lingering. We had given direction to staff to meet with the Housing Justice Coalition around community land trusts. That's lingering. The Police Oversight Commission and Oversight Ordinance is still lingering. And then the Surveillance Board's public meetings are still lingering. So those are my ongoing list of lingering items that, you know, as we continue to add items to referrals, I don't want us to lose sight of the stuff that is still hanging in the balance, some of which is coming on to its ninth and 10th month. So those are things that I think we just, this, this body needs to get more efficient and effective at, at follow-up, and we need that partnership with staff at, at that follow-up. So that, I wanted to provide that transparently for the community, that we're still waiting on a lot of, a lot of stuff that we've given direction on. And with that, I will go ahead and adjourn us at 10:24 P M.